Good morning, everyone. We're going to get started. I know there's people still coming in. This is not the voting portion of the meeting, so we'll just let them file in as needed while we review what's changed in the FY24 budget. I want to welcome everyone and thank everyone for taking the time to come out today to the special town meeting. My name's Krista Chapel. I'm the Chair of the Gray Town Council. To my left are fellow councilors Dan McGuire, Ann Gass, Martin Meany. And Councilor Height has been feeling unwell, so he may not make it today. Yep, Kyle. I'm just going to give Kyle one second to turn the volume on. So just a quick recap. Today's town meeting is unusual for the town of Gray. I've lived here 13 years and have always voted over a referendum at the polls, so I've never actually done a town meeting since this is new and fun for all of us. We are here because in June, the proposed FY24 municipal budget failed to pass. And our charter requires that we hold a special town meeting after the fact if the budget fails in June. So we are all here, hopefully, to pass the budget with revisions for the upcoming fiscal year. So I'm going to go over just some quick highlights and then all the warrant articles. And then we're going to have questions and answers at the end of my presentation. Just want to remind people that we have a hard stop at 10:30 because we need to commence with voting. The formal town meeting where voting begins has an end time of 5 o'clock PM. If we get to that point and have not yet passed a budget, we will have a conversation about what's next. But I certainly hope, in the time we have allotted today, that we will come to a consensus around the budget. So some quick facts about the proposed revised fiscal year 2024 budget. The mill rate is going up by about 9% over FY23. And that is a significant increase. However, if you compare the mill rate to two years ago at FY21, we're actually only going up by about 3%. So our mill rate has actually gone down last year pretty significantly due to valuations going up. And while we are raising it this year, it's remained fairly flat around 15 for the last five years. This is a breakdown of how your tax bills are paid to the different allocations. So $1,087,921 is an increase we're seeing from Gray's net share of the school appropriation. And the county appropriation is going up by $125,562. The school portion represents a 10% increase, which is 50% of your total bill. The town's portion is a 17% increase in the monetary appropriation, which is approximately 40.6% of your bill. And the remaining portions are for TIF funds and the county allocation. Now, what that means for an average property holder in Gray, so an average home value raise is about $352,500 at this point. And that's a bill of about $5,350 a year. And how that breaks down with the increase is about $434 extra this year to allocate to the town, TIF funds, the county, Cumberland County Services, and the school district. So for the town in particular, that increase is accounting for about $176 a year for the average homeowner, which works out to about $15 a month for all the services you see in town: plowing, childcare, rec programs, trash services, all the things we value as a community. So next, I'm going to go over the warrant articles. You will notice that they are slightly different than the articles you saw in June. That is at the recommendation of the town's attorney. There have been some accounting changes recommended on how we represent funds, particularly in the capital improvement program. We have certain funds designated for reserve accounts and specific purposes like emergency operations funding. Before, we were just putting those in the general capital improvement bucket, but our attorney has asked that we separate those out as a separate warrant item. So you will see additional warrants related to that. Just for reference, there are copies available of these warrants at the door and also this presentation if anyone needs to have a paper copy. So Article 1, you don't typically see at the polls because it's really only relevant to town meetings. We need to choose and elect a moderator to run the voting. So beginning at 10:30 today, the town has asked Natalie Burns of Jensen Bear, the town's legal representation, to come and moderate this meeting. However, you'll note that we still need to have a written ballot. So hopefully, everyone approves of Natalie doing the moderating, but we will vote by ballot to confirm her as moderator at 10:30 or someone else if everyone chooses. Once elected, the moderator will preside over the voting, and she will open the meeting or they will open the meeting by reviewing any rules that we need to follow. So the following articles, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and then 11, are referencing the municipal budget and any capital improvement projects we've proposed for the year. And these items are what directly affect the mill rate. This is a summary of Part 1. There's two slides because it was too large to fit on one. This is a summary of the general operating budget, which is inclusive of Article 2. So what's in the general fund budget? I'm sure everyone's wondering. Why are we spending this money? Some notable expenses this year are in addition of the main PERS retirement program for public employees of the state. And we're offering this as an improved retirement plan for the full-time fire rescue staff so that we can have better retention and attract more experienced firefighters and paramedics to our town. Right now, we're paying an outsized cost for overtime and per diem positions because we're mostly attracting inexperienced firefighters and paramedics who require oversight by more experienced staff. So even though we're hiring people, we're having to fund the overtime costs of more experienced staff at the same time. So hopefully, that retirement package will allow people to come from other municipalities where they already offer it, and they're more likely to find the jobs here in Gray attractive. Just like everywhere else, we're seeing an increase from utility costs and fuel costs. There's inflationary pressures there. There's also inflationary pressures quite a lot for the tipping fees at the transfer station. That's how we pay to get rid of our trash and our recycling. Those are going up every year because it's becoming more and more difficult to find places to put our trash and recycling. We're proposing hiring a new light equipment operator who will share duties in the winter. They'll be plow driver. And in the summer, they will help the Buildings and Grounds Department throughout town doing maintenance work around facilities and also parks. We're also proposing to fully fund two firefighter EMS positions that were partially funded in FY23. In FY23, we hired the two new firefighter EMS positions, but we didn't hire them until January, which is the middle of the fiscal year. So this year, we're hoping to retain those positions and fund them with a full year. We're also proposing a new assistant clerk administrator who can help staff address AP payroll processing, improve customer service in the clerk's office, and help with administrative duties, both in the clerk's office and the recreation department as our childcare services increase. We've also split one full-time code enforcement officer position into two part-time positions, which will allow the total workforce availability. We have enhanced professional development and training for staff to improve professional opportunities and their skills. There's also some continuity planning training for foremen and assistant directors in case, you know, I hope no one's planning to leave, but we always need to plan for people to retire and people to be out of the office. And right now, we don't have a good plan in place for many of our departments, so we're going to be undertaking a more formal continuity plan. You'll also see a cost of living adjustment for staff and year two of a market rate wage adjustment for some staff members that began last year. The cost of living adjustment was proposed at 6% in June. We have lowered that to 4% cost of living increase, a raise for staff. 3% of that would be across the board, and 1% would be performance-based. The market rate wage adjustments for some positions began last year after a study that the town manager undertook with comparable municipalities. We found that our staff were generally underpaid. So last year, we offered an 8% increase for certain positions. We paid 60% of that increase in FY23, and this year, we'd be concluding that increase with the remaining 40%. We have also cut a proposed position. We had proposed a public services administrator position to oversee both the public works and the transfer station departments and also serve as an engineer for the town so that we could cut down on costs associated with our contracting services that we currently outsource for engineering of the roads and other items that come up in town, stormwater. We have cut that position, hoping we might be able to revisit that next year, but that was a significant cut to the operating budget that we've made since June. So this page continues some expenses for the general fund, but it also touches on revenues. It doesn't elaborate the revenue line here, so I'm just going to go over kind of what we're seeing with our revenues this year, trends. We've seen a decrease in revenue sharing from the state allocation this year by a significant amount because our property values have increased. Basically, we have to take our fair share from the state. As our values increase, we get less money allocated to the town for the purposes of running town business. We've also had a lot of budgetary line items addressed throughout our operating budget by our finance director to more accurately match anticipated performance. Staff has also been pursuing grant opportunities, and we've received some of those to offset any costs we've been having for certain projects. And the recreation department is exploring expanding capacity of childcare, which brings in direct income for the town. You'll also notice in the capital improvement projects that we have ARPA funds from the federal government that was a one-time payment, TIF funds that we set aside every year from property taxes in Gray, and a proposed bond. All of those would do and will help offset direct costs in the operating budget. Actually, let me just go back to this. You'll notice on this slide there are specific line items noted as Article 3, 4, 5, and 6. Those are within the capital improvement project and refer to the accounting procedure changes I noted earlier. So the $50,000 line item for Article 5 was previously included in the total for capital projects, but our lawyer has asked that we ask that as a separate question. It's a $50,000 allocation to establish a land acquisition fund to give us more flexibility when opportunities arise for potential recreational open space or public parcels of land that might help us with our infrastructure plans, particularly in the village. The Buildings and Grounds Reserve Fund is $10,000 allocation. That is basically, just as it says, it's a reserve fund for buildings and grounds. Many of the projects that we budget for in a year are projected costs. We don't always have a way of knowing exactly what those costs are. And as everyone's aware, many things cost more when you go to do them because of inflationary changes in the economic environment. So that is a reserve account to have to cover any overages. And then you'll also see that we've reduced the capital reserve funding line from $325,000 to $100,000. That's basically a savings account for a similar purpose to the Buildings and Grounds. So we have a lot of big projects for facilities, technology, professional services that are included in our capital improvement project budget. That money would cover any overages, but it also is a savings account for next year's planning and next year's budgeting. So we've reduced that from $325,000 to $100,000. Sorry, I'm just going to go back one more thing. I just wanted to let you know what is in the CIP. What are some big costs in the capital improvement projects? There's increased road and bridge maintenance. There's addressing deferred maintenance that we have not addressed, and we're seeing critical need in a lot of our facilities. We're not buying any heavy vehicle purchases, like fire trucks or ambulances, but we are proposing the purchase of two light vehicles to help staff be more efficient in Buildings and Grounds and other places. Those have changed from June. We were originally going to purchase those vehicles outright, but now we're proposing them as a lease payment because it will lower the burden this year, and the interest implication was actually not that large. It was a difference of about $2,000 for both vehicles. There's also some IT systems upgrades. Our servers are in pretty bad shape. They're old. If we want them to continue functioning properly, we need to replace the servers that help our computers function in town. And then we're also proposing a cybersecurity audit, which will address any ransomware attacks the town might undergo. I know that that's a risk that might not happen, but if it does, it could be fairly costly for the town because if they freeze all of our computer systems and we have to pay to unfreeze them, we do not have that budgeted. And then you'll also see in the CIP the bond debt services for both old bonds and the proposed new bonds that we'll discuss later. So this slide goes over the revisions that we've made. This slide and the next one goes over the revisions that we've made since June. Now, I'm saying revisions because decreases. Some of them are accounting changes, as recommended by our lawyer. And some of them are deferred costs. So we're trying to put them off until next year, mostly in Buildings and Grounds and facilities. You'll also see some improved revenue numbers. The main DOT local road assistance actuals came in since June, and they are actually giving us more money than we anticipated, another $22,048. And our contract for cable franchise fees with Spectrum is $98,000 instead of the $50,000 we had estimated. So that's another $48,000 in revenues we have since June. Expense increases, I've already gone over some of these, but I'll just quickly highlight them. We eliminated that public services administrator position, which has affected your Medicare and FICA, social security allocations. Those have decreased. We've decreased some professional development programs for staff. We've removed an old software contract that is no longer necessary since we'll be shifting to different software. We've reduced the staff cost of living adjustment, as I noted, from 6% down to 4%. And our actual health insurance costs have also come in June, and those were less than we were anticipating, which is highly unusual, but glad to have it. We've also eliminated dry hydrant maintenance. The chief of fire rescue has informed us that that maintenance basically is unnecessary because as soon as we maintain a dry hydrant, it fills back in with gravel and dirt, and it's not a useful... It's not a good use of the fire rescue staff's time or money. It's a $10,000 decrease. We will not be purchasing the school resource officer vehicle... Or rather, I'm sorry, the school resource officer vehicle for the schools, which we contribute to, is not being replaced this year. And the senior property tax benefit that we enacted three years ago over referendum, we are removing that as a benefit for municipal residents. That's a $19,000 decrease. The reason we feel comfortable making that decrease, which I know some of you have used as a benefit and is important to a lot of older taxpayers, is because the state has actually improved and expanded a lot of their tax relief programs. They have a credit on your taxes, which is reimbursable regardless of the type of tax you've paid, and they have increased that by another $500. And the town's maximum benefit was $500. So indeed, they were duplicative. And while the municipality was proactive in this program three years ago, since the state has taken over the benefit, we no longer need to fund it. And then you'll also see some accounting changes I noted earlier. The CIP reserve accounts are now removed out of the total for Buildings and Grounds and Land Acquisition. And we've also moved some professional development costs out of the Parks and Recreation line items because they have a separate fund called the Enterprise Account, which funds their wages and other staff costs. That fund is created through any childcare or recreational programming costs that come into the town, so it doesn't come directly out of our general fund. So we've basically realigned those two line items so that they better match how we're making those accounting changes. This page deals more with the capital improvement projects. Some of the decreases you'll see here are we've decreased road construction costs by about $50,000. Our Public Works Director tells us that we should still have enough money to fund all of the road repairs that we had planned this year, so luckily, we can decrease that line item. We've removed a purchase of the school resource officer vehicle. Every year, every... I don't know how often it is. Every five years or so, the school resource officer vehicle is retired, and the town has an option to purchase it for municipal staff to use for things like public works and Buildings and Grounds. And we have opted to not do that this year. We've also, as I noted earlier, changed how we are purchasing two vehicles from an outright purchase to leases. We are not purchasing a router for IT. We've also removed this set aside we've been doing the last few years to help plan for a skateboard park. The planning has kind of stalled. There hasn't been a lot of movement, though I know there are a lot of individuals excited about a skateboard park in town. This year, we won't be making that $10,000 allocation, and we hope to revisit that again in future budget years. The library is putting off purchasing new chairs and tables. We have some more deferred maintenance for facilities that the Buildings and Grounds Director has said that we could probably wait till next year for. And as I noted earlier, the capital reserve, basically the savings account, has decreased from $325,000 to $100,000. So those were Articles 2 through 7, 2 through 6. And then we're also doing Article 11 here because it has a municipal budget impact. So you'll see here, you have to vote on this every year. It's in our charter. We have to separate this question now. A town council compensation question for $10,500. It's been $10,000 for as long as I've been voting here. We're increasing, we are asking to increase it this year to $10,500. So I just want to make it clear, this is not $10,500 for each counselor. This is $10,500 in total. So four counselors receive a $2,000 stipend per year. And this year, we're recommending that the chair receives a $2,500 stipend to address additional costs for meeting management and attending meetings. Okay, so now I'm going to just go over... Just doing a time check. We've got about a half hour. I want to leave time for questions, so I'm going to try to go through these fairly quickly. They're not quite as involved as the operating budget and the capital improvement projects, so we can get through them. These are Articles 7, 8, 9, 10, and then 12 through 17. So I just want to note, these articles address revenues of the bond authorization, a tax levy limit override question, the fund appropriations I've talked about that the accountant, or excuse me, our lawyer has suggested we make, and also transfers and distributions of grants and things like that. So the staff is definitely focused on implementing the comprehensive plan that was approved by 75% of the turnout in 2020. We had a village visioning in 2022. Over 200 people came out to define a vision for the village on town-owned property and create connectivity with the businesses in town and greater community feel in downtown area while also incorporating bike and pedestrian amenities into street skates. The goal of the money we're allocating is to attract new real estate and business investment within the village. It will create a vital center for public life, and we hope that it will grow the commercial tax base to help residential taxpayers carry less of the cost of the services you see in town. So Article 7 is a TIF allocation. So we're asking if the town will vote to appropriate from the TIF revenue fund, which we collect every year, and authorize the town council to expend TIF revenue in an amount not to exceed $626,753. That money this year will be used primarily to address the needs I just outlined for the village and community programs that we hope to see in the coming years. So it will create some flexibility in how we're planning, designing, and engineering, particularly for Yarmouth Road improvements and the Main Street improvements in the village. particularly for Yarmouth Road improvements and the Main Street improvements in the village. We want to implement ordinance revisions to align with the comprehensive plan and open space plans that have already been approved. And we'll also be applying for a federal RACE grant to supplement any local costs to the major infrastructure program. The RACE grant is shared by the main DOT, the municipality, and the federal government. The government, federal government would give us most of the cost, which we're hoping to be in the 30 millions. We don't have an exact figure yet. It's very expensive to do these infrastructure projects on the roads, and we don't want the burden to be solely on the town of Gray because they are state and federal roads that need to be maintained by more than just us. So we will be applying for this RACE grant, and we need to plan for that. And we'll also be expanding through the TIF funds the recreational facilities at Douglas Field, and we will also supplement that with grant money that we're applying for through a different organization. This is just a breakdown of the current balances. And we have three TIF funds. One's the Village TIF that was established, I think about four years ago. There's the Northbrook TIF that's been around since the Northbrook complex was built. And then there's the South Gray TIF, which voters approved, changing those fund allocations to address village work about two years ago. So we're mostly drawing down from the Village TIF for the planning and engineering services related to Douglas Field, Yarmouth Road, Main Street, and also stormwater that supports the infrastructure that we're seeing on those main roads. Now, this, this is a unique question, Article eight. It's a land acquisition reserve fund of $1,417,000 that we're hoping to establish by borrowing 1/12 of our general operating budget. So each year, the town is required to set aside 3/12 of our expenses as a savings account in case anything major happens where we need to have those funds available. However, according to the charter, we are allowed to borrow at no interest up to 1/12 of that to use for projects or other things identified by the council. We're asking for the establishment of this land acquisition fund to create some flexibility for strategic real estate negotiations for the infrastructure and open space plans we've been planning for for the last five years. Sometimes, real estate purchases come up unexpectedly, and we need to react to them. And if we have to go to the polls every time and wait until November, oftentimes, those real estate opportunities disappear because other developers have come. Asking to establish this fund of $417,000 in addition to the $50,000 would supplement one another to react to these timely real estate investments that might arise. I want to note that while we are voting on authorizing this fund to be created, any funds coming out of, have these opportunities, we will certainly inform the public and get input before we move forward on any purchases. This is another item that our attorney recommended we add to the warrants. We received ARPA funds from COVID relief, as many municipalities and state governments did, for $96,702 of those dollars to many capital improvement projects and expenses. They're listed here. Yeah, all of these are one-time costs. They're not recurring costs. A lot of, a lot of the, a lot of municipalities have gotten into a pickle with ARPA funds because they have used ARPA to fund staff expenses, new positions. These are one-time funds. We're never going to see these again. I hopefully, hopefully never see a pandemic again because I don't, I don't certainly want to live through it. But these are, we made the point of only using these for one time. Mostly capital and projects will be reliant on going forward. Article 10 is the enterprise fund revenue. As I mentioned earlier, recreational staff and costs are paid out of the enterprise fund. This question is just basically allowing us to accept the revenue and put it in this fund in order to pay recreational staff and hold programming for the town. Next up is Article 12, where we're asking for a bond to be approved for the municipality's projects as outlined, as I'll outline in a minute. In June, you will notice this was previously an $850,000 bond. We're recommending to increase that to $1 million at the same exact interest rate. Our bank was kind enough to honor the interest rate we had in June. It does increase the payment we have to make every year by about $30,000 versus the payment we were going to make with an $850,000 bond. However, it certainly reduces the burden this year of addressing a 70-year-old septic system that's about to fail at the Pennell complex and services four buildings. If the, if the septic system failed, it's out in the recreational fields where people play softball, baseball. We host childcare programming. We host the Blueberry Festival. If the septic system failed, it would be a major problem and a major interruption to services. So this bond would help us pay mostly for that. We're also asking in this bond to fund moving the buildings and grounds building, which is currently in what's known as the manual arts building on the Pennell complex, over to the Village Station Firehouse. The Village Station Firehouse is no longer going to be used by fire rescue because they are consolidating services into Central Station and Dry Mills. So if we, if we move buildings and ground staff over to Village Station, that opens up the manual arts building for us to add public restrooms that will support existing services. Now, many of you have children in the childcare program here or summer camp. You'll notice, if you ever stop by during the day, that oftentimes, the children are lined up inside Town Hall to use the bathroom because the facilities that we have in New Beacon are not sufficient for all the children that attend Gray Rec. Having public restrooms will also support recreational events in town, such as the Little League and major events like the Blueberry Festival. And then that manual arts building, in addition to existing, or adding public restroom space, would also have some additional programming space where we could potentially have more childcare services offered. This Article 13 is to, is a question that we see not infrequently in town, to increase the town's property tax levy limit by $55,477. Now, when we went to the polls in June, this amount was over $850,000. So, and I believe counselors can correct me if I'm wrong. There's been years past where we've approved a limit exception by over $1 million. Because of the revisions we've made since June, we have decreased this down to $55,000, which is significantly less than it was in June. Now, you're seeing this question because in 2004, Maine passed a municipal expenditure cap, which at the time was known as LD1, but it's more appropriate to call it a tax levy limit override. The, the cap is based on an annual percent increase in the municipal property tax levy, which does not include school and county costs. It's strictly municipal costs. And as we all saw, there's over $1 million allocated this year for schools, which I wholeheartedly support. Schools are a great resource to a community. But I just want to note that this particular override is only applicable to our town budgets. Anyway, it's a, it's a fairly complicated formula that was approved in 2004 and is generally not relevant to the budgets of 2023. Many towns override this at the council level or at town meeting, if they're, they hold select board and town meeting regularly, where they can have a conversation and talk about what it means. And it's generally not a problem, so I'm hoping it won't be today either. Article 14 is to establish previously allocated funds from FY23 into an emergency operations reserve account. There's no new cost on this article. We have already approved these funds in FY23. This is an accounting change recommended by our lawyer to remove the funds from our general account and put them into a fund that is specifically for emergency operations costs only. Now, emergency operations, that sets money aside to address major disasters. Fires, toxic spills, violent incidents. You never know when those things are going to come up, and this allows us to have funds ready to go to support whatever the needs are. Article 15 just allows the town to sell small equipment and set those funds aside for use at a later date. Donations through our affiliated organizations, like the Dry Mills Schoolhouse, the Gray Public Library Association, Gray Fire Rescue Association, and other town committees. Often, they get donations from people who want to help, and this just allows us to accept that meeting. And finally, Article 17 authorizes the council to apply for and accept grants that we receive from the state and federal government. So that is all the articles. The council wanted to give some time for questions. We have about 15 minutes. Once voting begins, there, you can ask questions during the vote, but this is, this is an opportunity where we can have a more informal conversation that's not tied to specific warrants. So if anyone would like to come up and ask a question about what I've just gone over, now's your chance.
Hi, my name is Peter Brown. I'm the president of Gray. I'm the financial person. When I look at this, I see two things that pop out. One is that Article 14, if we don't vote to increase the property tax levy, the budget won't pass, correct?
That's Article 13, but yes, that's correct. If this Article 13 fails, as it did in June, the entire budget fails.
It's Article 14.
Oh, are they correct? Okay, we had to, there was a misnumbering issue before, so I apologize.
So the actual vote on that is Article 13?
Yes, Article 13.
When we vote. Okay, so if we don't pass that, the budget doesn't pass.
Correct.
Secondly, in the revised budget, it states property tax increase on average home, 434 a year, for a $352,000 home. And it states that $217 of that would go to the schools.
Correct.
And then it states that the increase in budget for the school is over $1 million. There's no line item in this, in these articles that I could see that asks us, should we increase property tax? You, you've got a cap over here, which is different, but in the budget, property tax is going to be increased, but there's no line item for us to vote on whether or not our property taxes should be increased. I think that's not a good thing. I think that the residents should be asked every year, can we increase your property taxes? I would say no, especially during these hard times, to put a cap, a cap on property taxes for at least the next three years. And by so doing, then the town council is forced to adjust their budget, including the allocation of income to schools to fit the current level of property tax. Finally, the allocation of $1 million for the schools, well, what is that going for? I think that the budget here should have been presented through the mail to every voter in Gray one or two or three months in advance, where we have a lot of time to digest this. And it needs to go into line item detail because in, as you all know, the schools are filled with all kinds of controversial things. CRT, sex education, hypersexualization.
I, I just want to interrupt you because the school budget is voted on separately, and that did pass in June. It failed at the Gray polls, but passed overwhelmingly and we lost her. Therefore, they had enough votes to pass the school budget. We don't, we don't touch that number. We get that number from the schools district, and we have to just allocate it out in our bills.
That, okay, that's true, but we do have the control here on whether or not we want to increase our property tax.
I understand.
That should be a line item, and it's not. So I recommend to everyone in the room that Article 13 be voted down so that the budget doesn't pass, and then you go back and you make a new line item for increasing property tax or not.
Okay, I hear what you're saying. Our lawyer has not recommended that.
It doesn't matter what the lawyer recommends. What matters is the voters in this town are stating, we don't want you to increase our property taxes, so therefore, don't, and then adjust your budget accordingly.
So we heard that and understood some things. You have the opportunity to vote down the budget as part of Article, I believe it's free for the operations budget. You have it as voting down a line item for capital improvement projects. All of those indicate a property tax increase. You can find line-by-line documentation on the website. We shared it many times over newsletters, social media.
But I'm suggesting that there's a question that needs to be asked of the town residents. Can we increase your property tax? If it's a no, you have to adjust your budget without any increase in property tax and then present that budget to the voters.
Well, that is essentially what happened in June, and that's why we're here today. So I, I hear you. I think we can certainly take your information back to our lawyers or whatever.
So I'm recommending to the room that we vote it down. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sandy Carter. I'm the president of Gray. I just want to point out to everyone, I'd just like to point out to everyone that because the school budget has already passed, property taxes are going up. They are part of the mill rate, and nothing we do here today can change the school budget. The levy limit, tax levy limit is not technically a property tax cap. It only applies to municipal budget. And as shown in a previous slide, the town's budget only makes up about 37%, 35% of the total mill rate. The school makes up about 59% or 60%, and the county makes up about 4% or 5%. All three buckets are added together to come up with property tax. So you can definitely provide feedback and vote individually on the town budget, but it is not going to stop your property taxes from going up because you also need to work with the school board and deal with their budget individually and the county commissioners if you want to go to some of their needles. Those are items that are not covered by the tax levy limit, which is not, again, a property tax limit. I know it can get confusing. It isn't. We had a property tax, we had a tax levy limit increase in 2020, and the mill rate didn't go up. Sometimes, we don't have the tax levy limit question. We won't exceed it, and the property taxes still go up. It is a different formula that is outside of the total budget and mandated by the state. So I am here to say I appreciate the council taking into consideration the results of the June election and cutting the budget by $754,000 to address those, that feedback we received. In addition, for those who want the line item details, the council had over 10 workshops that are open to the public where they literally go line by line through the budget, every department. That agenda is published well in advance, usually by February, to give everyone an opportunity to look at each department and find the date and come on down and give some feedback. So that information is available, and I just would, I'm here to support the budget, and I hope everybody votes to pass it again.
Just a quick clarification of what the last speaker said. I have attended workshops. We are not allowed, the public is not allowed to speak at workshops and offer any input. I have made it hearings, inputs, and they have not been, they've been ignored. So that is kind of, you know, an insult to the public to hear that, sure, come on down, and then when you come on down, then they're going to listen to you.
That's fair enough. The council has recognized that feedback we heard before, and we will be having a conversation. The council has recognized that feedback we heard before, and we will be having a conversation, actually. Thanks, we can, about how we can revisit our, that was a big number. Go ahead.
John Welch, Mayberry Road. I have the impression that, I have the impression that there'll be no questions during the votes.
No, you're allowed to ask questions, but the moderator will tell you how and when to speak.
Okay. And I also have the impression that we have wrong numbers on.
Yeah, I apologize for that. There was a draft that had a misnumbering issue, that's if they remember well. We have a subsequent one that has been revised and approved. If it's possible, you just may accept it.
When we are actually voting on the articles, it's important that we know which one is. So what are the correct numbers?
Yeah, I'll, I will review that with whoever's elected moderator, and he will announce the article numbers and make sure we're telling you which ones they're referencing at the time.
Thank you.
Hi, Bob Pullman, Valley High Road in Gray. I want to thank the council for all the work putting together the budget. I do recognize it's a lot of work, and as Sandy said, I wish I could have attended all the budget meetings, but unfortunately, just don't have the time. I did spend all night, last night, went to bed at 4:00, analyzing line item detail, because when I look at the, the question of the budget, there's a lot of things that come into play in terms of calculating the final mill rate. Did my taxes go up or not? And that's what most people here care about, right? Unfortunately, there's a lot that goes into that, and we can't, as we said, we can't control some of that. There's certainly some things that will drive our taxes up that we cannot control. The part that we're here to talk about today is the, is the actual budget that the town manages and controls, the things that we can change. And I've drilled into the line item detail, and I'd just like to read off the percentage increases. Here's what I did. I looked at the, the last PDF that the town posted, pulled all that data out, created in Excel, and calculated the percentage increase, department by department, line item by line item, and I cannot understand the justification for the very significant increases. And I'd just like to read off some of those and have someone comment on where these come from.
I'm just, I'm just waiting if I don't want to cut you off. It's 10:25, we would like to start our time, so I don't know how many line items you have.
I'll just, I'll be very quick.
Okay.
Pay and bene, payroll and benefits has increased FY23 actuals versus the proposed FY24 budget. So what we spent last year, ending in the end of June, to what we're proposing. Payroll and benefits, 24.7% increase. Operations, 20.4% increase. Contracted services, 25.5% increases. Supplies and equipment, 32 point, I'm sorry, yeah, 32.7% increase. Building supplies and maintenance, 11.8% increase. I'll stop there. I looked at, I pulled the budgets for the town of New Gloucester. Their proposed town increase is going down 4.37%. North Yarmouth is going, they had an 18% increase, but a third of that was due to, they proposed a recycling, where they bought all these trash bins. If you take that out, their increase is 12%. Wyndham, 3.5%. I don't understand why our expenses are going up in excess in most categories, over 20%. It doesn't fit the economy. I don't understand it. So perhaps someone could comment on that.
Yeah, you're not wrong. A lot of them have commented a lot. What you're seeing is a combination of things. There's inflationary pressures across the board, for just across the goods, and also services, professional services, I mentioned. All of the services we need, auditors, lawyers, IT support, everything's gone up by the bottom.
But it's gone up in Wyndham, New Gloucester.
I, I hear you.
North Yarmouth.
I'm just relaying information I got. So we have benefits making, and also 64, 64%. And then the other thing you're noting is that our finance director has made a lot of accounting changes in how things were estimated. Our, the way things were being estimated pre-FY24 were not always accurate. There were some under-explanations of costs, and then there'll be overestimation each year. So a lot of the estimates we're discussing are reflecting correct.
But I'm comparing FY23 actuals to what we actually spent.
So FY23 actuals are still not firm numbers, because we don't yet have to audit our FY23 number.
I mean, we're, we're talking about a $1.08 million increase in expense, I'm sorry, a $1.8 million increase in expenses for the town budget.
Yes, so those are offset by revenue, so the overall increase is $1,883,000.
But those, those expenses land in our bottom line. So this affects not just this year's taxes, but every year going forward, because they become our new baseline.
Yeah, you're not wrong, and I just want to note the overall percentage increase of the town is 12%. And the legal monetary, and the mill rate increase is 9%. You are not wrong on the numbers and the fact that they affect the budget going forward forward. The council is very aware of that, and we anticipate when we enter the emergency FY25, that we are going to look at it and hope to keep it extremely low. We do not, we do not want large increases next year, and we want to maintain, we're doing, we maintain that. Yeah, it is 10:30. I'll take one more question, and then as we go through, if additional questions come up, we can address those with the moderator. Go ahead.
Hi, I just wanted to make a comment, I'm sure everybody else will agree with me. I think we're kind of tired about hearing about inflationary pressures. Every one of us is dealing with inflationary pressures. But we, what we have to do, no one's, no one's giving us any more money. What we have to do is we need to buckle up and, and live within our means. That's all there is to it. I mean, it, it seems like we're a bunch of kids. You go, you go to bed with the Iwana's and wake up with the Gimmes. And, and the more we give you, this is the same as the federal government, and the more we give you, the more you want to spend. You, you know? And one other comment, I know it's not germane to this, this arena here, but the school budget, school budgets, we're new to the area. We never heard anything about the school budget, but I'm sure everybody that had, have kids in the school system heard about it. So they're the ones that mainly voted on the school budget. I'm not sure about us older folks, but we never heard anything about it. So it seems, you know, kind of skewed to, let's, let's, you know, let's let the ones with the kids vote. I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I'm just, I don't care about it.
I know from the fact that the school district mailed the budget line over to every single home in Gray, so.
What's that?
You know, and then you can vote on it, but there's a separate question, the polls, which are advertised throughout all our communication channels in the town, and I'm sure the school also is advertising that. So, you know, I can't speak to why you don't care about it, but it is definitely well communicated.
No, not everybody, especially us older folks. We don't, you, you know, social media and all that, we're not, some people aren't correct, some people aren't connected or don't want to be connected.
Okay.
But we want to know what's going on.
Well, we use every communication that we have, and I'm sure the school does too. As I said, it's, the school goes out of its way to mail the budget information every month. So I will, I will pass that along to the district, but I can't speak to why you don't care about it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to conclude the Q and A for this open special meeting, and we're going to proceed with the town meeting process, or we will vote on each one.
Gray, what do you think of this moderator? What do you think of this moderator?
She's a lawyer, so I mean, she can't answer all types of questions.
I have to pin you with this, to your shirt, because otherwise we can't hear you. Just hold it up to me.
So at this time, I will entertain nominations for moderator. And, all right, so as you all walked, a yellow piece of paper, I mean, not yellow, sorry, blue, thank you. All right, you all received a blue piece of paper with Natalie's name, and there is a write-in. Do we have any nominations for another candidate for moderator? No? Okay. So we will have Judy standing at the top of the stairs over there, and Sue standing at the top of the stairs over there with your ballot box. We are only collecting the blue pieces of paper at this time, so if you can please check off your vote for your nomination and drop it in the ballot box, we will count those and then continue on with our meeting. All right? Thank you.
You don't want this here?
Nope.
No. Kyle.
Wait.
Kyle. Kyle.
I can't do this.
Can we move the laptop?
No, she has her button.
Okay, so I'll just close this down and get it out of the way.
Yeah.
So, just so you know, you're Natalie, right? Okay, I'm Kyle, I work for the town. This mic will allow you, the people at home to hear you. This one will allow the people in this room to hear you. So just be mindful of both, please. You can just, yeah, right on your shirt. Yep.
Do I have to say anything after I count, or you just get to go?
Um, you have to, you have to do the oath of office.
That's right.
Don't go, don't walk.
So with a majority of votes, Natalie Berg will be our moderator for this meeting. Natalie will swear her in, and she will take over for me. All right. Raise your right hand. Do you, Natalie, solemnly swear that you will faithfully discharge, to the best of your abilities, the duties incumbent on you as moderator, according to the Constitution of Maine and the laws of this state for the duration of this town meeting?
I do. Thank you all, I appreciate that. What we're going to do now is have a live town meeting, which I think this town has not done in a while. And so to start out, we generally follow the Maine moderators' manual, which is something that Maine Municipal Association puts together for us. It's very simple procedures, but as we go along, if there are questions about how to do things procedurally, I'm here to help you with that and to get us through this. Generally speaking, we're going to go through each of the articles in, in the order in which they were given to you when you came in and that have been available for you, and we will, I will ask first that we have a motion on the article, and then, once we have a motion and a second on the article, we can then move to questions. If there are people who want to make amendments to any of the articles, that would be the time to do that. I will remind you, I think you all know this, that you cannot amend an article to, to increase the amount of money that is set forth, but you can amend an article to decrease the amount that is set forth in the article before you. So with that said, I'm going to start out with article number two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $9,336,912 to fund the FYE 2024 municipal budget, as recommended by the town council for the following line item budgets. They are set forth there, and I will not read them to you, you can do that for yourselves. Do I have a motion on this? I have a motion. Do I have a second? Forward to discussion of this article.
Thank you, Ms. Ma, Ms. Ma, I would like to offer amendment to article number two, and I offer $8,182,912 as the new.
para aumentar la cantidad de dinero que se establece. Pero se puede modificar un artículo para disminuir la cantidad que se establece en el artículo antes de ti. Así que, con eso dicho, voy a empezar con el artículo número dos para ver si la ciudad votará para aumentar y apropiar 9,336,912 dólares para financiar el presupuesto municipal FYE 2024 como recomendado por el Consejo de la Ciudad para los presupuestos de línea y item siguientes. Se establecen allí y no les leeré para ustedes, ustedes pueden hacerlo por sí mismos. ¿Tengo una motion en esto? Tengo una motion. ¿Tengo una secuencia para la discusión de este artículo?
Gracias, Madam Moderadora. Me gustaría ofrecer una modificación al artículo número dos y ofrezco 8,182,912 dólares como la nueva cantidad para el artículo dos.
Maestra, ¿puedo pedir que repita los números para eso nuevamente?
El artículo dos, para ver si la ciudad votará para aumentar y apropiar 8,182,912 dólares para financiar el presupuesto municipal FYI 2024.
Tenemos un segundo en eso. ¿Queremos tener una discusión sobre la modificación a la motion?
Sí, me gustaría hablar de esa cantidad. He pasado por este presupuesto y he encontrado que en junio, el Consejo de la Ciudad de Gray votó y dijo al Consejo de la Ciudad de Gray, "Su presupuesto es demasiado alto, hay demasiado dinero en los gastos en ese presupuesto y queremos que hagas un corte". Y así el Consejo de la Ciudad no escuchó eso, porque cuando sí lo hizo, y como señaló ese señor, en esta presentación, en este artículo, hay muchos aumentos. Lo que pasó fue que el Consejo de la Ciudad tomó los gastos y los movió del artículo original y los puso en otros departamentos o, quiero decir, otras áreas, que se llama, si puedo llamarlo, "salidas", que la terminología va a relacionarse con el fondo de reserva capital. Va a referirse al, um... Oh, perdí la otra palabra. Pero de todos modos, son fondos de empresa, perdón, fondos de empresa. Y así esos valores que tomaron fue 1,14 millones de dólares y eso fue antes de cualquier corte en la actual operación. En este presupuesto hay muchas cosas buenas, no nada malo aquí, pero lamentablemente hay mucho exceso. Y, y otra vez, tuvimos un breakdown hace un poco de tiempo. Así que un corte significa que vas a disminuir parte de los gastos que, y puedo darles un ejemplo. En el presupuesto de la administración de la ciudad, en el presupuesto, había, oh sí, un extra de 21,000 dólares剩在賬戶 que era para aumentar y otros ítems. Así que esos 21,000 dólares de beneficios están en ese. Creo que cuando contratamos un nuevo administrador de la ciudad, no nos darían automáticamente un aumento de 9,000 dólares, 7,000 dólares. Así que eso debería haber salido, eso es un corte fácil. Eso habría sido un corte muy fácil de sacar de este presupuesto, pero estaba en ese. Y ese es un ejemplo de otros ítems que están aquí que no son necesarios, pero el Consejo de la Ciudad los ha tratado. Y para probar mi punto, nosotros, los contribuyentes, dijimos al Consejo de la Ciudad de Gray, "No te autorizarán para tener ningún pago, no te vamos a pagar, al menos después de la elección". Así que no culpo a ellos por venir y pedirles algo de dinero. Y, pero si estuvieran escuchando, dijimos no a 2,500, pero aún así vinieron y no con una nueva cifra o cero, simplemente no escucharon. Así que animo a todos a ver los datos y que tenemos mucho dinero. Oh, y en la cuenta de salidas, por cierto, seguimos usando salidas para operaciones. ¿Qué pasaría en vuestro hogar? Sabes, seguro que no tendrás salidas, pero no tendrás ningún crecimiento futuro, ¿verdad? Porque, sabes, si algo saliera que era necesario, no tendrías el dinero para pagarlo, así que tienes que ir a pedirlo. Y parte de este presupuesto, por cierto, tiene, ellos aumentaron el acuerdo. Así que estamos tratando de pedirlo para pagar algunas de estas cosas. Cuando regresamos, teníamos 1,100,000, ¿qué dije? 1,000,000, más de 1,000,000 dólares en dinero exceso que se puede usar para compensar el presupuesto. Así que lo que estoy tratando de decir es que vamos a votar por estos otros artículos e animo a todos a detenerlos y de esa manera tendremos las salidas para lo que bien intentado para el futuro. Y podríamos pagar por un nuevo parque, sabes, que está seco ahora y cosas así, pero tenemos el dinero para hacerlo ahora, no necesitamos pedirlo para hacerlo. Así que esa es mi presentación, espero que no me molesté a nadie porque es difícil tomar todo lo que ha pasado con todas las presentaciones que dieron y no darse cuenta de que ha habido un cambio y simplemente, sabes, los gastos no han sido abordados. Supongo que es la mejor forma de decirlo. Así que esa es mi presentación.
Le recordaré a la gente que lo que vamos a estar hablando adelante en este momento es la modificación al artículo dos y no discutiremos otros artículos en este momento. Así que la modificación, la reducción propuesta. Maestra, lo siento, debería haberme reconocido, estás estando justo ahí, adelante.
Mi nombre es Julie Sheets y para dar una clarificación, si puedo, la señora Monroe comenzó su conversación al decir que los ciudadanos de la ciudad de Gray derrotaron al artículo tres en junio. No derrotaron al artículo tres en junio. Y de hecho, el artículo tres fue considerablemente más que el artículo tres que estamos votando aquí. Así que agradezco a la ciudad por disminuirlo. Y otra vez, no, estaba escuchando muy bien, Fran, mi audición es perfecta, gracias. Siguiente, por favor.
Nate and Supra, de Portland, Rhode Island, Gray. Recomendan a ustedes o piden un disminuto de 8,100,000 dólares. Esto es sobre lineas específicas, ¿cuáles son sus especificos para esas lineas específicas? Estamos votando en el artículo dos, las lineas específicas para ese 81...
Perdón, tienes que hacer tus preguntas a través de la mesa y yo responderé la pregunta para ustedes.
Bien, muy bien. Así que, ¿cuáles son las lineas específicas que recomiendan para el disminuto?
Los lineal items determinados por el Consejo de la Ciudad basados en el voto de la reunión de la ciudad.
Bien, así que sin saber las lineal items, o no sabemos si esto es un disminuto de valor, ¿es justo decirlo?
Bueno, ustedes sabrán cuál es el lineal general para este item. Y entre los departamentos que se establecen en él, disminuciones tendrán que ser hechas en algunos de ellos y tal vez todos.
Así que en este momento no tenemos idea de cómo esto impactará positivamente o negativamente a largo plazo. Gracias, maestra, aprecio.
Sí, señor.
Hola, a todos, Sam Feigl, West Gray. Oh, lo siento. Solo hablando de la modificación, desde el último presupuesto que votamos, el Consejo de la Ciudad votó para bajarlo a 750,000. Esta modificación bajaría otra cerca de 1,2 millones, es un número muy grande. Sabes, podría haberme apoyado una modificación que fuera un poco menor que eso, tal vez, sabes, 55,000 para llegar a la L D 1, sabes, una cantidad razonable, sabes, algo así va a severamente afectar la capacidad del Consejo de la Ciudad para efectuar los planes que tienen en motion, ¿verdad? El Consejo de la Ciudad está formado de personas muy capaces, he visto que operan durante mucho tiempo. No solo hacen estas cosas de forma rara, tienen mucho esfuerzo que ponen. No menos que mencionar que solo pusimos un montón de esfuerzo en nuestro plan comprensivo. Mucha gente se encontró durante mucho tiempo para llegar a un plan comprensivo porque el presupuesto está destinado a apoyar ese plan. Sé que a veces nos tiramos de aquí y de allá porque estamos ocupados, ¿verdad? No tenemos tiempo para seguir todo lo que hace el Consejo de la Ciudad, pero es por eso que elegimos al Consejo de la Ciudad y en algún momento tenemos que confiar en ellos. Así que creo que hubiera apoyado algo más pequeño, tal vez 250,000, 100,000, algo así. Esta modificación es muy grande y va a severamente afectar nuestra capacidad en la ciudad y seguir en la dirección que creo que estamos hacia. Creo que Gray tiene algo realmente bueno y no me gustaría detenerlo con lo que siento que es algo arbitrario. Así que muchas gracias.
Volveré a mi otro punto, que es que, y uno de los personas también recomendó eso, todos tenemos que hacer corte en nuestros presupuestos personales debido a la inflación y todo tipo de cosas así. Creo que honro a Fran por recomendar que el presupuesto sea reducido. Recomiendo que el presupuesto sea reducido con un lineal, un red lineal que dice que no aumentaremos los impuestos de propiedad y no los incrementaremos de ninguna manera. Y que haremos que nuestro presupuesto se ajuste a lo que tenemos en los impuestos de propiedad. Ese número que Fran mencionó, no sé si es el número correcto o no, pero nuestros hogares tienen que correr basado en cuántos gastos tenemos, cuánto ingreso tenemos, la inflación está subiendo. Nuestra ciudad nos representa, ustedes trabajan para nosotros, somos sus jefes, nos votaron. Así que me gustaría sugerir que, con todo el respeto, mantén tu ingreso con los impuestos de propiedad igual, no lo increíble. Vuelve al tablero, no creo que pueda hacerlo hoy. Creo que deberíamos aplaudir toda la reunión y pedirle volver a hacer un nuevo presupuesto que no increíble los impuestos de propiedad, gracias.
Georgia Woodbury, East Gray. Solo como en un comentario aquí, primero, New Gloucester pasó el presupuesto escolar para que todos estemos aquí juntos, Gray and Gloucester. Sin embargo, si New Gloucester tiene el mismo presupuesto escolar, ¿por qué su presupuesto, su presupuesto municipal, solo subió un mínimo y nuestro está subiendo tan atrocamente? No tiene sentido para mí, tenemos que explicarlo. Segundo, a la mujer que estaba aquí que dijo que el artículo tres fue aprobado, según el presupuesto de tarjeta de ficha, en la elección en junio, el artículo tres no pasó, 603 a 378. Gracias.
En realidad tengo una pregunta, una clarificación, si me entendéis, no entiendo. Así que, independientemente de lo que pasa hoy, nuestros impuestos de propiedad están subiendo porque el presupuesto escolar pasó y el presupuesto municipal pasó, ¿cierto?
Eso es correcto.
Gracias.
Hola, Paul Coleman, otra vez. Solo quiero comentar, independientemente de la modificación, no sé dónde viene el número. Y parece ser un gran corte, pero tenemos que recordar que el corte es contra un presupuesto propuesto que era 27% más alto que el año pasado. Así que si volvemos a ver las expensas reales, ¿cuánto gastamos en FY 23? El presupuesto propuesto sigue 8... 8.1%, creo que es, 8.6%, lo siento, un aumento del 8.6% sobre lo que gastamos el año pasado. Así que sí, es un gran corte. No entiendo los detalles, no entiendo lo que impulsa el número, pero sé que representa un aumento del 8.6% sobre lo que gastamos en FY 23. Así que sigue siendo un aumento significativo en términos de nuestros gastos sobre el año pasado. Solo quería comentar.
Me gustaría recordar a todos que los comentarios deben ser sobre la modificación al artículo dos. Y creo que una vez que una persona ha hablado, eso es todo.
Oh, ¿puedo hacer una clarificación? ¿Este pregunta sobre ese corte?
No, su modificación es muy clara respecto de lo que se propone y no necesita haber ningún tipo de discusión sobre lo que significa. Eso es, una persona, tienes que hablar una vez durante cada item. Cuando volvamos al item principal, puede obtener una oportunidad de hablar de nuevo, pero no sobre la modificación.
¿Dónde está eso? Lo siento, ¿dónde está escrito?
Eso es...
Nunca he visto eso antes. He estado 50 años de worth of town meetings y eso nunca ha sido el caso. Así que, ¿podría explicar dónde viene eso? Sería feliz de aceptar la decisión si hay algo escrito sobre ello.
Bueno, ese es mi, esa es la regla que he dicho a ustedes. Y así es lo que va a, ustedes verán que hay mucha gente aquí esta noche, hay mucha gente aquí además de ustedes y otras personas quieren hablar. Has hablado una vez sobre eso y ahora quieres decir algo más, pero tienes mucho tiempo y podemos dejar que otras personas hagan, y una vez la motion se haga, una vez tengamos el voto en ella, obtendrán la oportunidad de hablar de nuevo sobre este item, pero no sobre la motion para modificarlo. Me gustaría preguntarles todos, esta es una reunión de la ciudad. Por favor, por favor, por favor. Es muy importante que tratemos de ser respetuosos entre nosotros, incluyendo a todos aquí, a todos allá. Estoy tratando de ser respetuoso de ustedes, pero eso no significa que todos puedan hablar múltiples veces en cada item. Tenemos varios temas para pasar hoy. Estamos en una modificación de esto y ni siquiera estamos en la motion principal todavía. Así que me gustaría escuchar si hay otras personas que quieren hablar sobre esto.
Cuestiono su decisión, Madam Moderadora. La pregunta ha sido preguntada para una explicación del acuerdo, modificación, y estoy dispuesta a mostrar de dónde viene esa cifra. Lo siento, no lo hice, lo tenía para hacer, pero no me hice muy claro y creo que por claridad, solo quería decir de dónde viene ese 1,000,000 de corte.
¿Por qué no lo haces adelante en lugar de pasar por todo el proceso?
Lo aprecio, está bien.
Pero recordaré a la gente en el futuro, por favor, recuerde que cuando venga, esa será su oportunidad en cada item. Gracias.
Gracias, bien. Así que de dónde viene ese 1,154,000,000 es 100,000 de artículo cuatro, que viene del fondo asignado, a tomar...
Espera, espera, perdón, lo siento, lo siento por interrumpirte, maestra, pero estamos en una modificación al artículo dos.
Eso es lo que estoy haciendo.
No estamos hablando de modificaciones a otros artículos.
Estoy hablando de dónde viene.
Bueno, viene de artículo dos.
Bien, 100,000, luego 20,000 para el artículo seis, 417,000 para adquisición de tierras, 596,702 para dinero de COVID y 20,000 para fondo de reserva capital.
Pero lo único que esto tiene que ver es con el artículo dos y aquí es donde has hecho la motion para bajar la cantidad y eso es lo que...
Sí, así que eso respalda esa cantidad de dinero, gracias.
Bien, tengo una solicitud para mover la pregunta. Tengo un segundo en eso. Puedo, tengo varios segundos en eso. ¿Pueden todos, alguien en favor, votar usando su tarjeta amarilla, por favor? Están votando para mover, bien, lo siento, estamos votando para detener el debate sobre la modificación, sobre la modificación, no sobre el tema en general. Manténganlo, por favor, gracias. Keep them up. They're still counting. Can they put their hands down? You can put your hands down there, county. Thank you. Okay, so the question has been moved. So, we are going to proceed to a vote on the amendment to Article 2 to lower the total budget FYE 2024 for the stated items to $8,182,912. Sorry. I, I will ask you to answer me on that one. Did I get that wrong?
Yes.
Why don't, what is it, Ben?
8 million.
Well, go figure. 8 billion, 100... No. Yes. Sorry. Yes. 8,182,912.
8,120.
8,182,912. I'm looking at you. You may answer my question. Yes? Is that right?
Yes.
All right. That's the question. That's what we'll be voting on. Everyone in favor of the amendment, please raise your hands. Do we have to vote? 73 in favor of, so it fails. The amendment fails. I'm sorry. You can all put your hands down now.
What is the count?
73 in favor of the amendment. And how many are there total?
No, no, no. Not everybody votes.
No, 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 no.
You have to take a no vote.
She's checking to see how many people have signed in.
What does it matter?
That's what I mean to do. There are 175 participants today. That's people who can vote. It takes a simple majority to pass it. We have 175 voters.
Don't you know?
Excuse me, but you need to have a no vote and an abstention vote. You can't just do how many in favor. You have to do how many are opposed and how many are abstaining. That's in Robert's rules.
Well, we don't have to do that. If we, we're gonna do, no, 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 no. We don't have to do it. We don't have to do it, but we are going to do it since obviously there's not a lot of confidence in the town meeting moderator. So, we're going to go ahead and we're going to have the yes votes. We do not have to do abstention votes if there are more yes votes than there are no votes. No, there are no, there are no questions at this time. We're in the middle of a vote. Is that, is that a point of order?
Point of order.
Yes.
Could I have you and everybody who's speaking get closer to the microphone so we can hear you?
Yes, we'll do that for you. Thank you.
This is a no vote. Be clear on this.
We've already had the vote on no.
No.
I understand that. Now, we're going to have the vote, wait, we already had the vote on yes on the amendment. We are now going to have the vote on no on the amendment. Everybody raise your hand if you're opposed to it. 94. 9... 94. It is 94 in opposition to the question, and so the amendment fails. Now, we go back to discussion on Article 2 as presented in the town meeting warrant.
My name is Zhenya Shavchenko. I live in the village, and I would like to make a motion to vote on Article number 2 in the amount recommended by the town council.
Okay, so that's, that's a motion to move the question. So, all in favor of moving the question, which means there will not be further debate on it. We will move to a vote after that. Please raise your hands. 100 in favor of it? There were 100 votes in favor of moving the question, and that's out of a total of 175 votes. So, we are now going to move to vote on Article 2 as presented in the warrant article. Could everyone, we've already had a motion and a second on that when we first started out. So, we are now ready to go ahead and vote on that. Please raise your hands if you're in favor of the article as written. We have 87 in favor of that. We are going to go ahead and allow the noes to vote at this point. So, if you're opposed to this, please put your hand up. 76. There were 76 in opposition to it, the article. Well, why would, why would you abstain? Either you're voting for it or you're voting against it. Are there people who abstained? Let me just ask. Did anybody abstain? Did you already vote? No. Okay. So, now we're going to have the abstentions count. But it's still going to be a mess.
Madam Moderator, may I ask a question?
Yes. Yes.
I am a baker by profession, and I work with a lot of numbers. You said there were 175 people here, correct?
Yes.
If you do the math, there should have been 88 people at the tail end of the yes vote. You said there were 76, ma'am?
That's what I was told.
Okay. So, you're short some people.
First of all, we've had some people leave.
Okay, I'm just asking.
No, 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 no. It's perfectly fair question. We have had some people leave, and so we don't have the exact count right now.
Okay.
If you want me to ask for those who have abstained, we can do that right now. Please put your hand up if you've abstained.
Thank you.
I know there's one person here. Is there anyone else? I'm not seeing any others. So, there was one abstention. We're going to move on to Article 3. Sorry about that. To Article 3 to see if the vote will rate, vote to raise and appropriate $2,566 to the Capital Reserve Fund for FYE 2024 for the capital projects as set forth in the warrant article.
Excuse me? So, did that pass?
Yes, it did.
Okay. So, how many people left? Shouldn't we know that?
You're, you're, you're not in order, but I will ask, I will have that question asked. Please, I just read a warrant article, and we're going to do that, and then we can ask that question, okay? Thank you.
Well, no, we can't really move on until we talk about this.
No, we're going to have a motion on this thing, and then we can stop, and we can ask the question afterwards. Please let me finish the article.
I just think it should be clear if people left what the new number is if it's not 175.
Thank you, sir. I understand your question, and we're going to do it. We're not going to do it at this particular moment. Right now, we have an article. Do we have a motion for Article 3? I see a motion and a second. Now, now, we did have a point of order as to how many people are voting at this point, and I'm not quite sure how we're going to figure that out. This is a point of order, so there's not discussion on it.
The point of order becomes irrelevant. You either vote for or against. If the number of in favor is higher than the number against, it does not matter how many people are here voting in favor.
So, that's a very fair question, sir. Very fair point. If anybody wants to... If anybody wants to have the number done, we're going to have a vote on that. Do we have to stop every time somebody leaves the room and recount the number when there were more votes in favor of it than there were opposed to it? So why don't you put your hands up? Put your hands up for... If we are not... Okay. I've lost control. But if you have had... If you have had a vote that says 87, and then it has a lesser number, and there was one person who abstained, but it did not reach 87, then that's the number that you have. Somebody might be in the bathroom. Somebody might have stepped outside for a minute. You can't keep a constant tally of this for everyone.
Excuse me. Isn't this specified in the moderator's rule of order? That's how the vote is defined. It's not defined relative to the additional people in the registered meeting. It's defined by more in favor and opposed. This is our right of order.
That's correct. And we're going to move on. Moving on with Article Three. We've got a motion and a second. Could we please have discussion on Article Three?
I hope I'm not beating the dead horse, but just to say it, Peter Brown, President Gray, in my opinion, the entire budget is flawed because it does not protect... It does not prevent raising property taxes. So therefore, I recommend to everyone in the room to vote no on every item, to send this budget back to the Town Council, have them redo it so that there's no raising property tax. If we vote yes on these items and pass this budget, your property tax will be raised. Therefore, vote no on everything and send it back. If you want to vote yes and have your property tax raised, then well, you got to do that. That's your conscience. But anybody who doesn't want their property taxes raised...
Please, people, let him speak.
Anybody who doesn't want their property taxes raised, send it back to the Town Council and tell them, "We're tightening our belts. You tighten our Town Council budget belt." And come back with a budget that, whether the school board needs this much money or not, come back with a budget that does not raise our property tax. It's a simple formula. So I recommend everyone who vote no on every item, finish the meeting, and let's go home.
I just want to say something about this voting process. I think we should get rid of these.
No. Ma'am, we have to have those so that we know who are citizens of town who are qualified to vote. That is done everywhere for town meetings.
Well, I mean, it just seems to be, if you pass the hat and whatever, it'd be more... Everyone would get into this. Count them, that's it. Somehow, there's got to be a way to do that instead of this... And relying on clicker takers.
Ma'am... Ma'am, I understand your point. We have an article in front of us, and that's what we're discussing right now. Do we have anybody there?
I'm personally going to vote in favor of the motion. I know that the council spent a lot of time trying to figure out how to organize the budget. I understand the property tax concern. This is a period of high inflation. Inflation for the last year was 7%. So a flat property tax is by default a cut. I'm going to vote in favor of the motion. I'm also going to move the question.
Okay. We have a motion to move and a second to it. All in favor of moving the question to vote, please raise your yellow cards. 112. 112 people had voted in favor of moving the question. So we are moving on to...
They'll challenge.
What is your challenge, ma'am?
Because they had to recount it? So can we just get another count from the start?
I'm sorry. Anybody who needs... Wants to speak is going to have to get up to the microphone unless they're unable to do so because I can't hear you at all.
But we can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Well, let me get that like that. That's my problem. I need people to come up unless there's some reason that they physically can't come up to the podium and speak because I can't hear you from the audience.
Can we challenge that and get a recount? Because they had to recount in the middle of it. So can we just start it over and recount it from the beginning?
How about if we do? No. No. We're not going to have a recount of it.
Is that in the books that you can't ask for a recount?
We are going to move ahead to the vote on Article Three as written. All in favor? 90. Are we sure that we haven't had more people? Brett? We haven't had more people come in since the 175 vote cast. Since 175 told. Okay. Tell me what the number was again. Number, number. 90?
9-0.
9-0, okay. It was 9-0 in favor. I'm going to ask that those who are opposed, please raise your... Thank you. 77 were in opposition to the article. The article passes. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to transfer $100,000 from the unassigned fund balance to the capital projects reserve fund. May I have a motion, please? I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Discussion, please.
Okay. Collette Green, Gray. I'm questioning what the fidelity of the validity is of this to just transfer money from one account to another. I propose that we just cut this to zero. And I don't understand the reasoning behind it just for the sake of moving money from one account.
I'm going to have...
I made a motion. I made a motion to cut it to zero.
Okay. You've made a motion to cut it to zero. So we will now have... Do we have a second on that? Do I have a second? Okay. Sorry. There is a second back there. Okay. So now we can have discussion on the motion.
Dan McGuire. Levon Johnson. Brad. The unassigned balance is... Some of the money from the unassigned balance comes from money that's left over at the end of the year. So for instance, if you look at the revenue portion of our budget, that is a estimate of what we expect to get revenue. We don't know if that's what we'll actually get, but that's what we're forecasting. Some years, whether it's direct size tax or for some other reason, we collect more money in that year than we thought we would. We're only allowed to spend the money you tell us we can spend. So that money goes into this unassigned balance. So I don't, to be honest with you, know right now exactly what that unassigned balance is for FY23 because we don't have the audio. But I have the official number. But we know that there's $100,000 there. And what we're doing is we're taking that revenue that we got this year that we didn't spend, and we're putting it into the capital reserve fund. The capital reserve fund is the fund that we use to save money for things like repairing the roads, repairing the roofs, replacing equipment. So this doesn't affect your taxes in the extent that this is a new money we're collecting this year. We're taking the extra money we had this year, and we're putting it in that capital reserve fund. So I just wanted everybody to understand what the capital reserve fund was and why we set money aside. When I came on the council six years ago, our capital reserve fund was a mess. A lot of times, what happens is... I won't go too far. What happens is that if there's any money that's unassigned that's left over, that money can be used to reduce our taxes in the next year. And that's often where some of that money goes. But what happens is if we don't put any money into the capital improvement account when we have a big expense, we don't have the money we need to take care of that expense. Six years ago, when I got on the council, there was a huge deficit in capital expense in the capital reserve. And we project out for 10, 15 years. We look at, you know, a fire truck, which is going to last hopefully 20, 25 years. And we set aside some money for that every year so that hopefully in the future, we have the funds that we need. We didn't have that money. We went to the... Six years ago, we asked them for a bond to fund the capital reserve account so that we could spread those costs out and also spread out the impact on our taxes. That strategy has worked really well. In fact, we haven't even needed all of the money from the bond. And some of that was returned, and the bond was paid off early. Parts of the bond were paid off early. So I just want everybody to understand that the $100,000 is for money that we're setting aside for some future expense, whether it's in FY23 or years out.
Do we have... Do we have other... No, no. This is not a back and forth. If someone wants to ask a question about the amendment, you may come up to the podium.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah. I just wanted to know how much is in the account now before you put the $100,000 in.
That was a good explanation of where the money comes from that gets into the undesignated fund. So what we have in... Currently, I need, as an example, to replace a roof over at New Begin. And we're using that by raising tax... We're going to fix it by raising tax dollars. Instead of taking this money that I call savings, but it is the undesignated fund, instead of using that money to offset that expense of necessary things that need to be done, that's where you start seeing decreases. And... There is money that needs to be set aside, and we did. And the prior line, $2.5 million, we just put into the capital reserve account. We just did $2.5. I mean, how much more do we need? So again, that $100,000 should be zero. I support the motion because that could be... You know, the undesignated fund can be used to take care of current needs.
We're trying to get that information for you, sir.
Mr. Councilman, you said that Article Four does not affect the rate of taxes. Is that correct? Because on one articles, two, three, four, five, six, and eleven on the paper, you can announce that these budget expenses would greatly affect the bill rate on this paper here.
Do we have an answer on the question? Do we have an answer on... Do we know what it was last year? Do we know what the number was last year? I know we don't know what it is.
Just to explain to the person who's asked the question, we can't give you this year's number, but we're trying to get you last year's number. This year's number is not set yet because of where we are in the process, but we are trying to get you last year's number. I think that we can have other questions or comments about the proposed amendment while we're waiting for that answer to come.
Nathan Su, I'm hoping I can move the question in a minute.
I would like to be able to answer the question from the participant, if we can do that. We are... We are... We really are trying to get that for you. And then we will have... We will move the question after that. Did I... Nope, 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 nope. I'm waiting to answer his question.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, certainly, ma'am.
I think this is probably just an indication. I'm looking at Article three, four, five, six, capital maintenance. And what I'm seeing like Article four that we're on, I'm seeing final is three point five, I'm seeing the quote is one hundred thousand. So what are we... What are we really truly voting about? It looks like, is this what you have in the offer right now, three point five? And then propose to bring it down to a hundred thousand?
Ma'am, we're trying to get an answer to that question. That's what we're doing.
Why don't you... Why don't you do that? Thank you.
Point of vote, do we have... They have a finance director on board to answer some of these questions?
We don't have the finance director here today, but we do have... Okay.
So where are we getting that information from?
There's someone who's prepared to answer your question, and she'll tell you who she is.
Hi, the finance director is here today, Christine. She's in the corner. She is... She is looking into what the firm figure is. As I mentioned in my presentation, we do not have firm FY23 numbers for a variety of our accounts because we've yet to have our audit done. We're in the process of securing the number. I can tell you a massive decrease. We had a three hundred twenty-five thousand dollar proposition for that savings reserve for capital projects in June. Part of our reductions that we made is to lower that savings to one hundred thousand dollars. And as Dan said, it can be used to cover any overages we see this year or save for future projects in twenty-five and beyond. That's the difference, than that one hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, there is a motion to move the question, and there is a second to it, so I'm going to have a vote on that now.
Can I just... Can I just say, what are we voting on? Are we voting on the three point five or are we voting on a hundred thousand?
No, no, no. You're voting to... The amendment is to reduce it to zero. That's what you will be voting on initially. That's the amendment.
So we're voting on three point five, right?
No. This is Article four.
I'm just trying to figure it out.
This is Article four, and the motion that is before the town meeting right now is to lower that amount to zero. That's what we're waiting for. I am going to ask for a call on moving the question. They're going to keep trying to get the answer for you, but we have to be moving along today. So put everybody in favor of moving the question with the understanding that we will try to get additional information for you. Please raise your hands. This is to move the question.
Brett, I can't remember what you said. Don't give me two numbers at the same time.
No, I got that. One, one, six.
One, one, six.
We have one hundred, one hundred and six in favor of moving the question, and I do have a number for the gentleman who was asked for it. And this, as we will recall, because the audited statements are not done for this year yet, but it is approximately twelve million, five hundred ninety-nine thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars.
What?
And you want another hundred K?
What did you just tell me?
Wow.
Sorry, we ignored that number. Really sorry.
My word, there's something wrong here.
That was a shocking large number.
We don't need a budget this year. Just take it back to the reserve fund. Just take it back to the reserve fund. We don't need a budget.
I think you could balance this.
I have a procedural question. Would it be appropriate to pass that?
Certainly.
I don't know if it's difficult. I'm not a technology person, but if it's not hard, could we have the article relevant to what we're talking about back up on the screen in the background?
Yes.
Hi there. I'm just going to ask a procedural question. Can I have your show me your checkbook? I was just wondering about this proceeding. Am I understanding correctly that the votes that we just cast would be challenged at the end and re-voted on? Or am I understanding that the votes that are done are finalized on one and two or three?
Well, technically, someone can make a motion to reconsider. Sorry, this is not close enough. Someone can make a motion to reconsider, but it will have to be voted on by majority of those. Yes, in theory.
Could be reconsidered.
In theory, yes, it can be.
Thank you for that.
Can I make a plain information clearer? As I mentioned earlier, we haven't done the fiscal audit for FY23, which ended January third of this year. We are in the process of trying to find an auditor to do the audit. We have an auditor. Unfortunately, that... But we did have an auditor in front of record before that. We are not going to be able to give you the unassigned fund balance that the twelve million dollars we're collecting is going to be funded. A hundred thousand dollars is in there, as I said, is based on our projected revenue, what we expect to get from next year. So because we can't give you the exact number, because our town manager's last day, he has a finance director who's been here for just a month. We're in a difficult position. Sorry, it's a... I want to find out because when I look back, I'm sure it will be different. This isn't a board very well, but I'm sure there are a hundred thousand dollars in that. There usually is. We can look back and see what that average is. I'm not comfortable with that. Someone can certainly make a motion to do a hundred thousand dollars and raise that argument. I could find out. I don't see what was at the end of this year. Sure, I will check it out. Thank you.
There's a motion.
There is a motion. Are we providing any more information about last year's or no?
Yes.
Okay. As has been explained to you, there is an unfortunate series of events that have us with people who are brand new to the position. The person who was the town manager is not available to us anymore, and that is not something that we can answer with any great certainty. I'm sorry, Sir, we did try to get that information for you.
Point of order. Point of order gives out of order. There's a vote. What's going to be the vote?
Okay, okay.
He just spoke.
Why can't I speak? Can I speak further?
We are going to be voting on whether to move the... We've already moved the question. We're going to be voting on the amendment to cut this to zero.
So that gentleman just spoke. Is he out of order?
No, we're not going to go back and forth on whose side we're going to have. No, no.
We have a vote, sir. We have a vote.
Stop. Please stop. And you, sir, is there something that you want to ask as a follow-up to the fact that we were not able to give you the information that you asked? You may do that.
So the reason why people want to know is because if there's twelve million dollars in there and it says not, I would vote no. If there was two hundred thousand or three hundred thousand, I would probably vote yes. I don't have a vacation budget, forty thousand dollars at the end of the year to over my overhead groceries, and then just take that... I'm not going to just put another thousand dollars in vacation. I'm going to pay off my shortage of groceries. And that's the point you want to make. If there's not enough money in there now or that these people want, I'm off of the hundred thousand. But just stick it in there. No information is just real wrong.
Well, thank you. There's not going to be any further comments on this. I would remind you that if there is not a hundred thousand dollars, it's not going to get transferred regardless of how you vote. So just keep that in mind. So we are now going to move on. We're going to go ahead and have a vote on the question on the amendment to cut the amount in Article four to zero. All in favor of the amendment? Please put your hands up.
We should maybe vote on this so we know what's in there.
The number in favor of the amendment was fifty-five. And it fails. So we now move on to Article 4.
What's the no vote? People leave.
Is there a point of order? Because I'm happy to have a point of order.
Yes. What is the no vote? People leave. Right.
Chairman Chair, President Frank raises his hand. When we vote, could we please do the vote for yes and no? We don't know the total yet, but I'd like to thank that we got an idea about it. Just to be fair to yes and no, I'm sorry to address this.
Yes, we can have a vote on the, those in favor, sorry, those opposed to the amendment to Article 5. Go ahead, those opposed, please put your hands up. Please put your hands up. Article 4.
Article 4.
93 were opposed. 93 were opposed. We are now moving on to the main question. Article 4. Yes, sir.
I'm just going to go out of the line here. It looks like the top, we originally proposed 2.8 billion dollars for the capital reserve. Then you reduced that because you reduced the number of seconds on per savings. 3.5 to 100,000, that was to reduce the overall objects. Now you're adding 100,000 to the reserve, which is going to be 2.5. There's a couple other items in there, so the total initiated reserve. It says expenses, but it's probably balanced, it's 2.7 million. And my general understanding is that the town for years and years did not set aside enough money for savings for capital reserve. As Dan pointed out, six years ago, they didn't plan to remedy that by adding some additional money to savings so that it don't get slammed when we have to buy a fire truck or some additional unexpected expense. And for that reason, I think it's important to go into that and we will inform the amendment.
Are there any, is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? If not, I'm going to call for a vote on Article 4 to see if the vote will transfer $100,000 from the unassigned fund balance to the Capital Project Reserve Fund. All in favor, please indicate. 99. 99 voted in favor. We're going to go ahead and have a vote on those opposed.
Point of order?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I didn't include a lot of these meetings. I'm really stirred. And first of all, I'd like to move this meeting suspended until we have accurate numbers. If this is in the presentation, we have random people, we have an un-audited set of records, we had a town manager that left and had recommended that we have the votes voted in. When you want to define any problems in the records, we get rid of the auditor.
Ma'am, that motion is out of order.
Second.
And this is, it's a motion to suspend this meeting based on inaccuracies that have been here resulting in a lot of stress with misinformation or lack of information, I should say. And I think that it's unfair for us to continue with this meeting with so much going on. And so we have our act together, then we can come back and work on a cleaning budget.
Ma'am, that's out of, that's out of order.
I second that motion.
Article 5? Okay, again, I cannot hear you. There's a lot of people speaking. I can't hear what any of you are saying. So if someone wants to get up and say something as a point of order, please, I'm happy to have it. Oh, we were going to have mail votes. We were going to have.
We were about to vote on the mail vote.
That's what we were going to do, thank you, sir. We are going to vote on mail votes for Article 4. So all opposed to Article 4, please raise your indicator. 40 of you are opposed to the motion.
What did I tell you?
Motion passes.
I told you.
Article 5, to see if the town will vote to transfer $50,000 from the Capital Improvement Reserve Funds to the Land Acquisition Reserve Fund established by town meeting in fiscal year 2020 and to appropriate up to $50,000 from the Land Acquisition Reserve Fund, provided that the Town Council shall hold a public hearing prior to the expenditure of any funds from the Land Acquisition Reserve Fund. Do you have a motion? It's a motion. And a second. Discussion, please.
General, again, gracious. So, guys, I would like to make a motion to vote for Article 5, 6, and 7 at the same time because it's the same as Article 4 about transferring money, which is already on the account.
Okay. Articles 5, 6, and 7. He can, no, he can make the, he's made a motion, he has made a motion to take the articles together. A person who has agreed to, was the second, has agreed to that. And so we are going to have a vote on whether to take these as one article.
If you do something out of the ordinary, like I just said, to suspend this meeting, you certainly can't go and vote as a lump sum. Why, we have to vote individually on each article. We can't lump them all together.
That moderator, point of order, I think there's a motion on the floor. It's been moved and seconded, so we need to dispense with that motion before we can move on.
Well, I think that she was speaking to the motion itself as to whether to take it. I'm sorry, are you talking about the original motion?
You have an original motion on the floor. You read Article 5, it was moved, it was seconded. That motion is a priority motion. It needs to be dispensed with in one way or another before you can entertain the lump sum.
I, okay, I get to make a call here. And my call is going to be that this should, that we should not be taking the articles all together. They should be done separately and voted on separate. But whatever time that takes, we will do. So we are at Article 5. Which I have already read, has been moved and seconded. I moved the, the motion out of order as to whether three articles can be done together. So we are now having a discussion on Article 5.
I'm Eric Foster, I'm with the road. This name, Land Acquisition Fund, is something that's relatively new. And I'm wondering what, how much land is the town looking for or is it a lot of purpose?
I'm Jim Wire, John Story Gray. And I think he answers your question because I think you're going to ask it. We have multiple projects going on. Yarmouth, I think they're supposed to be. Yarmouth Road, everyone, this familiar rhythm on 15. We're going to try and fix that road for as long as ever with 10. The right-of-way along that road is as narrow as 30 feet in some places, which wouldn't even qualify as a camera. That's the sun is that. You have once one of them, it's horse path, and then a car path, and now it's 25. In order to straighten out the right-of-way issues from the village to the top of the hill where the state stops improving on 15, we're looking to have some money set aside that we can use to purchase right-of-way or property if we have to go along that stretch of road. There are also right-of-way issues potentially on Main Street and Village. Main Park Transportation turned Main Street over to the town instead of its own responsibility. What they did is they paved it, made it look nice, and they gave it to us. But the storm drain system from, well, the whole storm drain goes through the village except for the road, which we fixed before, needs to be replaced. We have spent five years working with Main Park Transportation to finally get them to acknowledge that that is their responsibility. And there is a project on that that will eat up the entirety of Main Street. There are going to be some possible attempts associated with that. We haven't done all of the deep research and anything else that goes into the Main Street project. So what we're looking to do is we're looking to set aside this amount of money so that we'll have the ability to do that work and basically sort through all those issues. Thank you.
Do we have any other? Do we have any other questions? Yeah, my microphone is not on. It's not. Do we have any other questions, comments that anyone would like to make? Give me a second, okay? If not, it just went off again.
I can add a challenge to his decision. I looked up Robert's rules, as supposed to be going by today. And it does say that we can postpone to a definite time and date if we need additional time for investigating this budget. And I think a guide would be what you already comes up with. So I'm going to make a motion at this time that this meeting is suspended to a definite time. And we end the meeting at this point.
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry, this is not working.
I can't hear you.
I, it's not working. I can't make it work.
The mic wants to suspend the meeting.
I'm a moderator. I'm a moderator, please.
Okay, so they. No one expected it to last this long. Okay, so the. I'm going to do the best I can. I'm not sure how well that's going to work for you. The only motion.
I'm a moderator.
Can't hear you at all.
I don't have a microphone. Yes. Yes. Thank you. I'm just going to do this. I don't have enough. Okay, thanks. Yes, go ahead, and then I'm going to come back to question.
I don't need the, oh, really, I don't need the microphone. My parliamentary inquiry is the motion referred to Robert's rules. My understanding is this meeting is not being followed by that. We are doing the main moderator's manual. And I'm questioning, what does the main moderator's manual say? Not Robert's rules.
Thank you, I was actually going to say that. The main moderator's manual says that if there's going to be any recess or adjournment of a meeting, it has to be to a time certain. So unless you're going to present a time for this meeting. So, unless you're going to present a time for this to be, to be held, you cannot have that motion. For you said that you wanted to recess it, and you can't do that unless it's to a time certain. If you do want to do a motion to recess or adjourn it to a time certain, you may do that, but please include the time in that.
I'd like to make a motion to recess till after the audit.
No, it cannot be until after the audit. It has to be to a time certain, which means a date and a time.
Okay, so when is the audit, then? I'd like to know.
If you have a budget, then you cannot wait until your audit is done.
Okay, so I'd like to make it October 10.
Okay, if someone wants to make a motion, then it will be postponed to October 10. Yeah, we're happy to have that. And we needed, sorry, we need a time for that motion, not just October 10.
I currently need relevance of the motion, the motion on the floor, and credit for both of Article 5, if we cannot get it dispensed with.
We're going to, we're going to deal with this question first. It has to be to a time certain, not just to a date. I don't think you're the person who made the motion.
I made, I made the motion.
Okay, all right.
I made the motion to suspend the meeting to a time certain, and the time certain should be October 1, which is in a couple weeks.
That's not a time certain, that's a date, but not a time.
Same as we were called for this meeting.
It's a Sunday.
Sunday, so let's make it Saturday, maybe for September 30.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
I'll, I'll take care of that, thank you.
Sorry.
It's all right.
I was wrong on that one.
Okay, I did see some seconds. So, we're going to now have a vote on the motion to recess to September 30 at, what time was it?
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM. Okay, understanding that we don't know whether this room is even available at that time, but let's go ahead and have the vote on. This room is, this room is not available then, so I don't know where we're going to have a town meeting.
Can I amend that?
No, that's the, that's the motion. Okay. Go ahead.
Ben Chair, is there, do we have discussion on the item?
Yes, you can have discussion.
Yeah, Rick Light, Frank Circle Gray. To make a motion, I'm stating the obvious at this point, to a time certain and a place certain, and getting prior notifications as required by law, and having a location that is available and works well with the community calendar is quite a process. To name a date off the back of your hand, not knowing whether it's a Sunday, Monday, or Tuesday, and not knowing time, is absolutely ridiculous. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Dan Maguire, Johnson Road Gray. To my knowledge, we've never had an audit completed before we've had a budget vote. We vote on the budget at the beginning of June, the fiscal year ends June 30. So, our history going back for a long time is to not have an audit before we have a budget vote. In fact, the fiscal year is not even over before we have a budget vote. The other thing is I can assure you, despite the fact that I've heard that it's homecoming that weekend, so that's something to run into. There's not a snowball's chance in you know where of us getting an audit done by the beginning of October. I wish it wasn't the case, but that's where we're at right now. I understand the frustration of not having certain numbers. I understand the frustration of having to work through the mistakes that have been made in the budget. If this, if the $100,000, if the unassigned budget pieces, that's the sticking point for people, because we can't give you a hard and fast number as to what the unassigned budget balance is. And someone's free to make a motion to remove that from the budget. But the last unassigned budget for which we have audited figures was 835, $835,000. And remember, Kristen mentioned earlier that we have, by the charter, responsibility to set aside three twelfths of all the money that we collect. At the end of that year, that money rolls into the next budget. And then whatever the next budget is, we're required to set aside the three twelfths of that. So, we're always going to have an unassigned fund, excuse me, unassigned fund balance. The reason, the council was comfortable putting $100,000 in there is because historically, we've always had multiples of that. I understand not everybody in the room is happy about us not having a set figure, but that at least explains the process and to some extent why we can't give you enough to that. Thank you.
And I would, I would remind everybody that we have voted on Article 4, which was the question about the unassigned fund balance. But we do have a motion before us to postpone this meeting to September 30 at 10:00 AM. And I'm going to call for, did you, I'm sorry, you just want to speak on that?
I did, I'm sorry. I just have one question before, before we vote on that. If we delay the meeting, I would assume that not only do we have a problem in terms of finding a space and community calendar and all of that, but I would assume that also it may affect town operations at some point in the near future, since we're currently operating without a budget. And I was wondering if somebody could speak to what the effect would be before we make a decision like that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have it seconded, we understand the problems with next week, but, but not next week, in two weeks, but we're going to have a vote on it. All in favor of postponing until, until September 30 at 10:00 AM, please raise your indicators. Please raise your indicators. We're having a vote on it. Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't hear the question. I'm very sorry about that. Okay, let's try again. We are moving, there is a motion to postpone the meeting until September 30 at 10:00 AM. All in favor of that, please raise your indicator. There were 29 votes in favor of that, and I'm going to make the moderators' call, and we are not going to have the opposite vote done. We are now going back to Article 5, which has been moved and seconded. Discussion on this item. Would someone like to come to the podium and make a call for vote, please?
I would maybe move the vote forward.
Got a second? Okay. So, the next question that is going to be voted on is whether we're going to move the question for Article 5. It's not Article 5 itself. All in favor of moving the question?
It's okay.
presented in the town meeting warrant. All in favor, please indicate. It's 124 in favor. We are going to go ahead and vote those opposed. Your opposed, please indicate. 24 opposed, the motion passes. We are moving on to Article 6 to see if the town will vote to transfer $20,000 from the unassigned fund balance to the Buildings and Grounds Capital Reserve Fund established by the town council in fiscal year 2023, and to raise an additional $10,000 for the Buildings and Grounds Capital Reserve Fund, and to appropriate up to $30,000 from the Buildings and Grounds Capital Reserve Fund for capital improvements and projects related to town-owned buildings and grounds. Do you have a motion, please? Yes, and I have a second. Discussion, please. Do we have discussion on this one?
I'll hold my bag. My name's Mary Sweeney Underwood, and I live on Beehive Drive in Gray, Maine. And just kind of an observation that, that none of this that's being put forth, and I understand all the questions, it seems like suddenly it's appearing in front of them, but none of that's been arbitrary. The council has had meetings in person and workshops for months, and I've gone to them, or I've watched them on Zoom, or if I couldn't watch it on Zoom, I re-watched it. And every one of these questions, I've known as the person's been asking it because the council has addressed it. And maybe in the future, go to your town council workshops and get your questions answered. And I think you'll be quite surprised that every penny in this last budget is needed and being used.
We have a request to move the question to an amendment anyway. I have a second. All of those in favor of moving the question? 113 voted in favor. Move the questions that we are now going to vote on Article 6 as presented in the town meeting warrant. All in favor, please indicate. 99 voted in favor. We are now going to have people in opposition to it. That was 22 opposed. The article passes. Moving on to Article Seven. See if the town will vote to appropriate from the TIF revenue fund and authorize the Town Council to expend TIF revenue in an amount not to exceed $626,753 for Gray Village and related road construction and utilities planning, design and engineering, stormwater, wastewater systems feasibility studies, and construction of sports fields to supplement Douglas Field, all in accordance with the TIF Development Program documents as recommended by the Town Council. Do I have a motion? I do. I have a second. Would anyone like to comment on this?
Good afternoon. Sue Austin, 136 Shamada, Nebraska. Can anybody give us a little bit of update on what the actual details would be on the addressing of that, because we want to have a sports situation?
TIF stands for Tax Increment Financing. The world loves its acronyms. This is a mechanism that the state created that allows towns to take property taxes and set them aside for some future purpose. Setting that money aside doesn't negatively impact our revenue sharing with the state. Basically, it's sort of hidden from that calculation. We have three TIFs in town. This money will be used primarily for really, the description here is, I mean, I don't have the plans for all of these things that are named here, but it's for all of these, all of these things. It's for developmental goals, to support the comprehensive plan, the master plan. Some of that has to do with fixing Yarmouth Road. It has to do with the work on Main Street. Some of this TIF money is used to help the water district replace water mains that are decades old. So, this money hasn't been specifically allocated to a particular expense. What we're asking for is to take some of the funds that we've already collected, this isn't, this isn't a new tax, and to set it aside for these purposes. The town is applying for a federal raised grant in the order of probably 35 to 40 million dollars to do the work along Main Street and Yarmouth Road, and to fix the stormwater system actually that continues all the way down to the turnpike. If we get this raised grant, our liability for that project will be probably somewhere north of $3 million. There's a huge spectacular savings to the town if we can get one of these grants. Over the last few years, we've worked to try and get grants to give some relief to the property taxes. This would change forever the way the village would look, but there's no guarantee that we're going to get this money. We're working with our representatives in Washington. We're working with our representatives at the state to try and line things up. We have a lot of support from Senator Snow and from Senator King's offices to try and get this through. We have to submit that application by this coming spring in order to qualify for funds that would allow us to implement this project in 2028. One of the things, quite frankly, that we've never been very good at is looking far into the future. We always come to the table late. MDOT comes and wants to do a project, and they come to us and they say, "Oh, you should have been there, you should have been here three years ago." We have been trying to get the horses out in front of the car, and we've been successful. Any of you that drive up 26 and see the North Raymond Road improvements there, we were told that we were too late for the things that we wanted to implement there. We told them we don't care, postponed it a year, we want these things done. Our town is growing, and whether we like it or not, other people are writing a lot of rules that we have to comply with, that we don't have any say about. Anyways, specifically for this, that's, sorry, I got off the topic. That's the reason why we want to set that money aside. This is not new tax money.
Sandy Carter, Shaker, voted. Just to speak to the Douglas Field question, for those of you who aren't aware, we have discovered that a proportion of Douglas Field is actually on private property. It is not on public property. And that private property owner has other plans for his piece of it. And this money that's being asked for for the Douglas Field is to allow the town to move Douglas Field off that private property onto the Hamilton property or the Village Gateway property, which was purchased by voters. And that would actually allow us to build a couple of fields, just this with Gray Little League, Gray and Lost Raymond Little League. And it would also allow us to move one of the smaller fields off Canal, so that we could have a little bit more room on Canal. As part of that effort, the town is working with the Gray and Lost Raymond Little League to submit for a major league baseball grant, which would hopefully cover the majority of that. We need to set aside the matching fund, or the portion that we would be on the hook for, in order to apply for that application. You have to show that you have the matching funds. So, I hope everybody will support this, especially given the success of our Little League team this year. We want to make sure we actually have a field to play on.
Okay, so I have the breakdown of the TIF, but first of all, I'm not sure where the town was going with the TIF. The TIF, the money comes from, in this case, Enicon. They originally expanded and asked for the expansion to be sheltered into what we call a TIF. And that money, as he said, does not get reported to a customer in our town evaluation. So, we get more tax revenue from the state because that money is sheltered. However, there are restrictions on using that TIF money. You can't just use it whenever you want and for whatever you want. You have to use it in the district itself, okay? And I do know that the ball fields happen to be in the TIF district, so that's not a problem. But it can't be used anywhere else in town that is not part of the TIF district. And it can only be used for some of the items, like utilities and the stormwater. However, this feasibility, we just spent, I don't know how many dollars, and we had that open session where everybody came in and got their ideas about what's going on. That was called the feasibility study back then, just a few months ago. Maybe it was six months ago, whatever it was. And here it is. They want to take another 25, and we paid a lot for that, which we have not, by the way, gotten results formally from the council. Anyway, they want another $25 for another feasibility study. This is your government at work. You know, they keep on spending money to do studies, and there has to be a stop. They have a plan. We've already paid for it. So, if anything, I think we should remove at least the $25,000 to get the point across that you can't just spend it when you want, and if you don't like to be sold to one report, you're going to go and get another report. So, I recommend that we drop this by the $25,000. I was going to drop it by the field, but I guess that explanation is a good explanation. And I wonder what we're going to do with that field then? Are we going to sell it to that property owner so he can buy the rest of it? Would make sense, because he's doing a lot of development in the village, and maybe it'd be a good spend, spending up tax dollars for a good project. So, I recommend that we drop this by that $25,000.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
Does anyone wish to be heard on that?
Damagore Gray. Fran's right, there is the Northbrook TIF. The Northbrook TIF isn't involved in this particular project. You may remember that we had what was called the South Gray TIF back when the furniture company, Gobils, was going to build a water park out on Route 26100. We paid to put a 16-inch water main down Route 100. And there's no more Gobils Furniture. Several years ago, we asked you to, when you create a TIF, you have to identify what property you're setting the tax dollars aside. If you don't make improvements in that, in those parts, within those parcels of land that ultimately lead to increased taxes, when the TIF is done, all of that value comes back into the equation with the state, and there's the potential to lose a tremendous amount of revenue sharing money. We knew that that development wasn't going to happen, so we went to voters and we asked you to let us redefine that TIF and create the Village TIF. That Village TIF gives us the authority to spend money on any of the roads that come into the village for any of that infrastructure. The Northbrook TIF is a very specific TIF that only applies to Northbrook itself, but the Village TIF, which we're looking to use money from, is much broader than that. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to be heard on the motion to amend? If not, I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor of the motion? Wait, what? Oh, sorry.
Hi, Krista Chapel, resident of Gray, chair of the council. I just want to speak to Fran's motion to reduce the TIF allocation by $25,000 specifically for the feasibility study that she's mentioning. The feasibility study we did a couple of years ago, actually a year ago, was for village designing, which was the consulting agency, the principal group. We do have results from that study that we've shared and published on website in multiple meetings. The stormwater feasibility study that we're asking for as part of this TIF allocation is to support the infrastructure for this, particularly Main Street, as we apply it for the South Gray through the federal government. The stormwater, some of you might know, currently flows from the village.
From the village?
It's from the village. That's my point, folks, who's speaking. She's saying when I'm talking to the $25,000, I is what I'm speaking to. The feasibility study for $25,000 that's part of this TIF allocation is to address stormwater concerns and understand how our stormwater flows and what the capacity is in the village, because otherwise, if we don't do that, we cannot support the type of development we like to see, create the density we want to see in the village and the type of economic development. Currently, the stormwater flows underneath the turnpike and exits out over here, Paddle's Hemmer Range near Fair Road. And we need to understand what capacity is for that flow. So, this is what that feasibility study will address.
Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on this?
If not, we are, we have before us a motion to amend to remove $25,000 from the $626,753 amount set forth in the warrant article. All in favor of the amendment, please indicate.
There were seven votes in favor of that, so we're going to move on to the main motion. Is there anyone else who wishes to be heard on Article Seven? The amendment failed. I'm not seeing anyone. We're going to have a vote on the main motion for Article Seven. All in favor, please indicate. All in favor, please indicate. There were 110 votes in favor of that. We are going to now proceed to those who are opposed to it. Please indicate. There were seven opposed, the motion passes. Article 8, to see if the town will vote to authorize the transfer of the amount in excess of three twelfths of the town's unassigned general fund balance as June 30th, 2023, not to exceed $407,000 to the Land Acquisition Reserve Fund, provided that in no event shall the unassigned general fund balance be reduced as a result of such transfer to a level less than two twelfths of the town's net assessment for commitment, and to appropriate up to set amounts from the Land Acquisition Reserve Fund for costs associated with infrastructure improvements and acquisitions of land necessary to achieve the open space and gray village development goals identified in the town's comprehensive plan and the Gray Village Master Plan as the town council deems to be in the town's best interest, provided that the town council shall hold a public hearing prior to the expenditure of any funds from the Land Acquisition Reserve Fund. Do I have a motion? Yes. Do we have a second? Yes. Would we like to have comment on this question?
Gary Foster. Essentially the same question I had previously. What is the purpose of these land purchases? What does the town have planned for them? How much land? And I view this as a double-edged sword for the taxpayers, that not only would we be paying for the purchase of this land, that land would also be removed from the tax rolls as well. So I just wondered how much land and what specific purpose is, I do.
We didn't, we didn't plan this for me to follow him and answer his questions. You know, we all understand what all those words mean individually, but when you put them together, the meaning kind of gets lost. The easiest way for me to explain this is what the town is proposing to do is borrow from its 401K. So we have this unassigned fund balance. Our charter allows the town to borrow a small percentage of that. It allows the council to borrow a small percentage of that. Council has to put forth a plan to pay that money back within five years, according to the charter. The last time we did this was when we bought the fire truck. The truck was a few hundred thousand dollars more than we had set aside and that we expected. So what we did was we went to the voters and we said, can we borrow some money from that account to use to buy the fire truck, and we will pay it back over the next five years? And we did that. It's a way for us essentially to loan ourselves money. You might be asking why we're looking for this amount of money when we already had a conversation about money for land acquisition? And that's, that's because these are coming from different funds. I have a flow chart, which I can share, actually. It shows you where the money goes in and where the money goes out. And it's, it is pretty complicated. This is not going to affect taxes this year, but in fairness, we'll have to start paying this money back next year. So next year, we'll have to pay a fifth of that back. So, you know, sort of truth in lending, if you will. It won't affect the taxes this particular year. The real estate, what are we going to buy and where are we going to buy it? Is a tough question for me to answer. When the council started to express interest in the Hamilton property, which is now called the Village Gabriel property, we had a conversation with a whole bunch of people in town about development in town. The majority of the council decided that they wanted to put it to the voters to buy this particular piece of property. Someone, having heard about that meeting, went and offered that owner an extra $100,000 more than they were asking. So when the town went to try and purchase that property, we ended up spending $100,000 more. And everyone voted, the majority voted for this, so that went through. So talking to you about specifics about real estate issues is problematic from the council's standpoint. And it's for the reason I described, not because we're trying to hide something from you. We have stormwater issues. We have septic issues. We have a variety of issues. One of the things, when Cumberland Farms built their new store, we were able to have them pay for part of the stormwater repair that needed to be made. One of the council's plans, that if we are able to build the stormwater system we think the town needs, anyone who hooks up to that stormwater system will have to pay the town a fee. In fact, we've talked about licensing fees, so it would be an annual reoccurring cost. It's not going to pay for the project, but it does, over time, help pay for the maintenance of the project. So I'm not going to go into specifics about what we're looking to buy, but it is a part, an integral part of the whole village plan. And quite frankly, it might not be something, you know, it could be something that we really don't need for 15 years. But in 15 years, the property might not exist to solve the problem that we need to solve around septic or sewage or something like that. So that's why the council, I said before, we're trying to get out in front of a lot of these things. And that's what this one is focusing on. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Yes.
Yeah, collect tweeting again. I'm just curious, you're saying it's not to exceed $417,000. But then, we've already transferred out $50,000 from the Land Acquisition Fund under Article 5. So are we double dipping, or is that going to be reflected in this $417,000? Because essentially, it's going to amount to not to exceed $467,000.
Someone is coming to hide the answer.
It's coming from two separate accounts.
So then, the not to exceed is really 467, not 417?
Can I?
Sure.
This money is coming from two different accounts. So remember, the town has different budgets. We get excise tax money, we get state revenue tax money. We voted to transfer $50,000 from the Capital Improvement Reserve Fund, which has somewhere north of a million, million and a half, maybe $2 million in it now. I don't have the number in front of me. This money is from a different account.
But you moved that into the capital, you moved that into...
The Land Acquisition Reserve. And we're moving this into the Land Acquisition Fund too. So it is a total, as you say, of $467,000. But it's not, it's not double dipping. It's coming from different accounts. Exactly right, thank you. Yeah, the question was, and it has to be two separate articles because it's coming from two different accounts, and that's correct. We, I can't say that.
I would like to move a question. I ask a point of order for moderator. Is it under your distraction to do a visual count of the, you know, for 100 or 20, maybe you could just look at it and call it? Or is there any vote, especially the motion to move the question? Does that have to subject to accounting?
Just so that you know, what I've been doing is if it's not the main motion, I have not been making it go to a full vote on everything unless it appears close. But if it is the main question, we are going to, we are going to consider, continue having both sides counted.
Then I move the question.
Okay, well now we've got a vote on that. There weren't any questions. So all in favor, all in favor of moving the question, please put your hands up. And I can tell you that that passes. We're not going to have to go through a count on that. So the next question is Article 8, as presented in the town meeting warrant. I'm sorry, all those in favor, please indicate. 94. 94 in favor, all opposed, please indicate.
Oh, sure, he did. Oh. And he never leaves that.
If you're looking down the room, it's just, you have to be able to see a lot of gray.
Night tea. Night tea, all opposed, the motion passes. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $569,000, $596,702 from funds received by the town under the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds program authorized by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 for the purposes set forth below, and to authorize the town council to expend such amounts consistent with the regulations of the SLRF program. And this part, I'm not going to read through the individual lines. Do we have any discussion? I'm sorry, how about a motion? Yes, there's a motion and a second. Thanks. Do we have any discussion on that?
Just a quick question, does this mean that this is $596,000 coming into our budget that we did not give from taxpayers, correctly, from the federal government?
That's correct. I can answer that one.
So if we didn't have this money, we'd have to really raise taxes?
Yes. Is there anyone else who wants to? Don't call the question, because I don't think anybody else wants to say anything. Would you like to say something? No. I don't see anybody else who wants to say anything. I know there's somebody who, no, yes? Yes, there is. No, there is not, sorry. Okay, we're going to go ahead and we're going to have a vote on this. All in favor of Article 9, as proposed. 111 in favor, all those opposed to this article, please indicate. And that's what I thought. Nobody? Nobody? Okay, we are not going to keep going because there's nobody. So it is zero opposed. So that motion passes. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to accept and appropriate for their designated purposes all the various town enterprise account funds, e.g., non-major special revenue funds, recreation enterprise funds for FYE 2024, as recommended by the town council. Do I have a motion, please? Thank you. And a second. Would anyone like to speak on this matter? If I'm not seeing any, I'll be sure, okay, we're going around. Nope, I don't see anyone who wants to speak, so we're going to go ahead and have a motion on this. All in favor of this article, please indicate. 106 in favor, 106. All those opposed to the motion, please indicate. You're sure now? Okay, well that one passes unanimously. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $10,500 for town council compensation for FYE 2024 as recommended by the town council. We have a, okay, we have a motion and a second. Would anyone like to be heard on this?
Why not? Okay, so I spoke about this just a little while ago, about them giving themselves a raise this year. It's always been $1,000 that the town councils have gotten over the years. And it's supposed to be a token type situation. Do you know how much school board members get for meetings? Well, for this year, actually, not for the meetings, for the year? $250. Managing a lot more budget than this town budget. So, I would, and we, the taxpayers, told them in June, we don't want you to get any money. But they were arrogant enough to come back with the same figure. If they had come back with $1,000, then I suppose that would have been fair because, as they say, that's historically what a town council gets. So, the town council, so, I think that we should send a message and make it half, one half or $1,000. That's my motion, that the motion is $1,000. Five thousand, excuse me, what is it? Am I out to lunch?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, 1,000 per person, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry, the motion has to be 5,000. I apologize for that, yes.
There is a motion, is there a second? Yes, there is a second. And the motion is to reduce to a total of $5,000. Is there anybody who'd like to be heard on this? Yes.
Thank you, ma'am, Chair Rick Life from France Circle Gray. I think several points were made, one that has always been $1,000 for years and years and years and years and years. And the amount of work the council does today is increased by years and years and years and years and years. We have a group of people who were rightfully but requesting that they actually do additional work by potentially postponing this meeting, creating more work for them and the clerks and everybody else. I would say it's a mere pittance considering I also keep referencing the fact that we have the inflation as well. So, to keep their $1,000 or whatever it was static with all these other factors going on, I think it deserves to the council, not to vote, and hope that all will vote this amendment down, and thank you.
Pam Wilkinson, 46, Bertrand Road, Gray. As voice from the past, I think that, I can't remember, but I think it was a lot more that we used to get. Maybe you can correct me. But this year's been adjuvant for the council. It's been a really tough, difficult year. And you're right, I echo Rick's comments. It probably pays for gas money and whatever else. It's certainly not enough, and yes, it is in kind, it's something you want to do, something you have a heart for. But I think most of us on both sides of the road, we thank you for every hour, every time that you got up, every meeting that you had. And yes, we have not all been there, some have watched, some can't be there because they're volunteering doing other things. So I really appreciate the fact that you are here, you explain some things that we don't get to see sometimes, and I love the town meetings.
Julie Sheets, Wilderness Way, Gray. To the best of my recollection, it's been $10,000 for a number of years. It has never been, for as long as I can recollect, $5,000. So they're asking for a $500 increase. And for the amount of time these people spend working for all of us, it is a pittance.
Anyone else?
Brad Fogg, town of Gray. I think the $10,500 is more than reasonable, and it actually probably should be twice that amount. Looking at the councils they sit there today, I see that we have one council, Anne, who is a fill-in for a person or a vacancy that we were unable to fill. We have Mr. Height, who ran for council this year. We had two vacancies in the town council, and there were two candidates out of the six or seven thousand citizens in this town running. So to give these folks some type of compensation, not only for the town council time, but for the committee liaison time, and the workshop time, and meetings with DOT, and the meetings with the main traffic authority, well deserved, if not more. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? If not, I'm going to call for a vote on the motion to reduce the total amount to $5,000. All in favor of the motion to amend? All in favor of the motion to amend the amount to $5,000? Are those yes? Yes? Are there any others? Okay, I see yes, two yeses. Is that what I'm getting from the clerk as well? Okay. So, the motion fails. And we are back to the main motion for the amount as set forth in the town meeting warrant. Does anyone want to be heard on this? Not seeing any, so, all in favor of Article 11. 113 in favor. Just a minute, remain consistent with what we've done up to now. How many would like to vote in opposition to it? Please, can you indicate now?
No.
One. Motion passes. Article 13, and I'm only going to, oh, Article 12. This is 12. Thank you all for correcting that. Okay, Article 12. Shall the town vote to authorize the issuance of up to $1 million in general obligation bonds or notes of the town to pay and/or reimburse the cost of improvements to the septic system that services multiple buildings on Pennell Complex and the construction of additional public facilities and programmatic space for the Town Recreation Department and Child Care Program in the Manual Arts Building? Said bonds and notes hereby authorized and the proceeds thereof hereby appropriated for said purpose with the details of such bonding, including provisions that the bonds may be prepaid or subject to call for redemption with or without premium to be determined by the town council. I am not going to read the financial statement, it is in review. Can I have a motion, please? Got a motion, and I've got a second. Would anyone like to discuss this?
Yes, Renesha Chang from Very Village. I have a question for the council. When they're bought, that's for a decent amount of money. I would like to know how much money will be dedicated to the new septic system, even with septic treatment, and how much money will be dedicated to actually new buildings for the rec department? Thank you.
Thank you, that's an excellent question. I'm sorry we don't have that breakdown for people that see on the screen, but I can go over it. First, I just want to note that this hasn't increased since the June question, it was previously $850,000, and now it's $1 million. The reason for that is because our Buildings and Grounds Director has informed us that we missed the fall construction window because of the availability. So now we can't do this work, and so it levels to next year, and that's increasing the cost of doing the work, replacing the big amount. So, in regards to the breakdown, about $520,000 of the cost is going to septic, and septic repairs, so the majority of it. Recreational facilities, the court, the basketball courts and football courts, is another $150,000. We'll be moving the basketball courts as well, so we'll be improving parking once the septic is complete. So there's going to be some shifting of the fields and the basketball courts. The manual arts conversion, the building that currently has its maintenance, where we will be putting in restrooms, recreational rooms, and some storage and office space for recreation garden to address current need, mostly for the bathrooms, to be honest. That's another $250,000. And then some general site work related to moving water lines and propane tanks that are all buried underground is another $30,000. So that comes to $950,000. And these, I will reiterate, are estimates of today's numbers. So we're giving ourselves a $50,000 buffer to cover overages. Also note that the Village Ground Drifter, Mel Russo, he's not here, but he has stated many times that that is a small buffer given today's costs, and that we're trying to be as conservative as possible. So, that's the breakdown, and I go to the floor.
Good afternoon, Diane Kavanaugh, Egypt Jordan Gray. It's really more of a statement than it is a question about the article. I understand the article, I understand the dynamics. I'm simply asking the town council, when we look at next year's budget, as we kind of move forward through this process today, before we start asking the citizens and the residents of Town of Gray to add more to our debt ceiling and that what we owe, to please reduce the debt that we owe versus asking us for another million dollars. We're all struggling with budgets, we all understand inflation, and we all have to try to live within our means and in our budgets. And I think the Town of Gray needs to do so as well. So, I appreciate the work, but I think it's time that we regroup a little bit, and before we come back in June of 2024 and ask for more money from the town and the residents, that we do not ask for additional bonds, and that we see, and I will say, I appreciate the breakdown of the indebtedness, because when I went to the polls in June, that was not available. And it was a lot of lack of clarity, I think, which led us to here today. So, moving forward, months ahead, and in the world of social media, I agree with the statement that was made a little earlier today, not everybody's on Zoom, not everybody can participate at town council, there's still a lot of print media. And even in the June budget, I know in my household, we did not get more specific information about the June budget until five days before the election, not giving us an opportunity to really react. So I'm really simply looking, if we're looking to move forward and be progressive, before June comes next year, I would rather not see another bond question, and when the breakdown is shown to the taxpayers, that we see a reduction in that debt versus asking us to increase it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sharon Mori, and I'm a resident of Gray. I just want to say that my daughter has attended the rec department childcare for years, she absolutely loves the program, but I have heard mentions of the bathroom situation. These improvements are definitely needed, not only for childcare, but also just for the regular use of those fields, which have been greatly improved over the years, so this is a much needed improvement. So I support this issue.
Hi, Sandy Charter, Shakeroe. And I just want to point out that I think the council agrees with the previous speaker, and that this bond is actually, the bond payment itself is in line with what we're already paying. So we have some bonds that are expiring, some older bonds. If you remember, we had a bond for the Pennell Building, we had a bond for the library, and we had the bond, as council required and advised earlier, for CIP. So I can say, being a former counselor, that we take the bond and debt level very seriously. Gray's debt level is actually very, very low compared to a lot of other municipalities, and what we're trying to do is make sure that that debt payment stays relatively stable. And then speaking to the improvements, we have been warned for several years in a row that the Pennell system is near collapse, the septic system. So we either pay for it now, or we have a little control over it, or it becomes much, much more expensive if it fails. And to the bathrooms, anyone who's used this footprints, but also, if you notice, there's a lot of traffic restriction when childcare is in process, and it restricts the parking. So it's not just about childcare and rec, but it's about residents being able to use the footprint more effectively and safer for our kids, and so I support it. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Dan Maguire, Gray. Before our request for this bond, our debt actually was slated to go down next year. Before the additional cost of this bond, it was slated to be equal with what we have for, in a for an expense this past year. By two thousand twenty-seven, what we owe would sink below eight hundred thousand dollars. And actually by two thousand thirty-one, it's under two hundred thousand dollars. These are, you know, infrastructure changes. People are going to have to decide their value, but the thought process of the council is, you know, we have an existing amount of money that we're spending on bonds and this allows us to sort of hold that and not make it any additional money. It will bend the curve a little bit. Our debt repayment won't go down quite as fast as I just said because of this million dollars, but it is trending downwards and it has been trending downwards for the last couple of years. Also, the repayment plan, obviously the quicker we pay it, the less interest we pay. So that also figures into our calculations, trying to weigh affordability versus the extra expense of borrowing money. And then finally, I think you have to take into account the lifetime of these kinds of changes. The last time this was done, parts of it, we've been told, are seventy years old. So obviously the life of this project is going to extend way out beyond my life. Thank you. And I meant to say this earlier. I just want to thank the town staff that are here today to help us do this. We do have a lot of new people. It has been a long time since we've done a town meeting. And I meant to say that at the beginning, but the whole council wants to thank them for their time and efforts today. Thank you.
The man in the blue shirt. I have a question. If you, what did you say, in two thousand twenty-seven, what did you say the debt was going to be down to?
It was eight hundred thousand dollars.
So if we don't do any more bonds?
That's what we'll end up, yeah.
Right. But it seems like, another gal said that, wow, you know, we have some bonds coming due, so we don't have to do a lot, let's tax more on. I mean, what is the likelihood of those bonds getting spent down to eight hundred thousand dollars? Not very likely.
That's entirely up to the voters.
Dan, you can do it.
The future is entirely up to the voters. I mean, we just put together the plan and then you folks either go yea or nay and we move on from there. So the decision about future spending will be, it will definitely be, we have to go to you every time we want to borrow money. So it will definitely be something that goes to the voters.
I just want to make one comment. Would this whole day, would this have been better served as absentee voting instead of, you know, people here for hours and they had to walk out? You know, it's the love of the draw.
I can answer that for you. That one I do know the answer to. Under the provisions of the town's charter, you have a referendum vote on your budget. But if that fails in any regard, you have to have a live town meeting. And there's nothing that can be done with that unless you change the provisions of the charter.
Right, but then you only get one hundred seventy-five of eight thousand people here over eight thousand, only one hundred seventy-five.
Well, if you'd like to petition for it.
And I didn't get anything in the mail about school or the vote in June. I didn't get anything. So there's, I don't know, I'm on demand.
If people don't love this process, then you can either go through a process to amend the town charter so that future votes on the town meeting budget would be done also by referendum, not have to come to a live town meeting. Or you go for a charter permission and everything is open if you do that.
How do I get announced now? Am I announced in the mail?
I don't know that.
What are you asking us? What are you asking us to be announced in the mail? How will we, how are these votes getting, how's the rock the boat getting out about these times that we vote? Like in June, I didn't receive anything. For the school, I didn't receive anything either. Is that coming through the mail supposedly or do we have to get online and be on social media?
Well, I believe that your June meeting takes place on a specific date, which is the same as, yes.
But we don't know, people that are new don't know that and they don't, you know what I mean? It just seems like, I don't know, it just seems kind of disingenuous that, you know, we expect some votes, but it's almost like we really don't want it. The less people, the more we can push through, you know? And you know what? Hey, that's my opinion. But one hundred seventy-five people and now down to, you know, maybe ninety.
But that's what the charter requires. So that's what we do.
Steve Bunker, South Red. I think people need to consider the fact that the town meeting is more than just a chance to pick at the dollars and cents. It's a chance for us all to get together. There should be more people here and we should make more of an effort for it. A few years ago, there was an effort by essentially a couple of councilmen to end the town meeting altogether, the town meeting as we do it. The town meeting in Gray raised troops to send to Boston, to the siege of Boston in the Revolutionary War. And we've had a town meeting here for years and years. The idea of a town meeting is more than just town business. It's a chance for us to get together. It's a chance for us to learn from each other. There are many of us here that disagree with the course, the country, the course of our town, but the more we get a chance to get together and express our ideas, then the more we know, the more intelligent we are, the more secure we are as a community. I welcome the chance to get together. It is inconvenient at times, I know, but I think we are people in more of it and not less. Thank you.
I'm going to remind the speakers that we have a question before us about the issuance of general obligation bonds and that's what people should be speaking to, although some of these comments have certainly been very well stated.
Quickly, our bond rating this year, this past year was raised by newbies to, I forgive their symbolism, but it went up another notch. Our rating is actually one to be jealous of and it has helped us keep our borrowing costs lower because it has netted us lower interest rates. The original commitment we had from Andersgård Bank for this particular bond, we got early in the spring when we were doing the budget. Most interest rates have gone up since then, but Andersgård Bank has kept that same interest rate that we had earlier this year. So I understand, I mean, millions of dollars is a lot of money, but as a percentage of what the town is worth and as a percentage of what our budget, I think we're actually pretty conservative than a lot of communities around us. Thank you.
Just another quick question. I don't understand a lot of this, so I get a lot of questions. I'm sorry. I appreciate you guys, council staff. My question is, you said, I think it was you that said it went from eight fifty to a million and that was Public Works? Is that correct? So my question is, if that's the case, that's like an eighteen percent interest from this summer to next summer and that seems, I mean, I'm a builder and I know costs of building and some things go up, some things go down, and that just seems a little high to me and just wanted maybe to speak to that.
Unfortunately, our Villas-Graves Director wasn't able to be here today, so he has better grasp on the actual line item costs. As I mentioned earlier, the construction window we were hoping to get into was the fall of twenty-three. Because the vote failed, we didn't secure the bond, we didn't have the funds to begin work. So now we're looking at spring or even fall of twenty-four to execute these repairs and improvements to the complex. Again, I don't have the line items in front of me and Villas-Graves Director has better grasp on the actual increases, so I can certainly direct that question to him. But he clearly communicated that the moving, the construction season increased the cost associated with retaining construction crews and also just the ideas that go into rebuilding the facilities that we're improving. So that's all I have on that.
Hi, Val Coleman, Valley High Road, Gray. I'm going to face this way because I want to talk to the voters, people that are going to stick up their flag and vote yes or no. One of my difficulties is when we spend all our money and then something really important comes up and you go borrow money to meet that need. I completely support all of the things that this million dollars is going to pay for. There's nothing bad on this list. Bathrooms for kids, right? Who can vote no for that? My challenge is that we, people in this room voted for a twenty-seven percent increase in expenditures on Article Two, twenty-seven percent increase in expenditures over what we spent in FY twenty-three. All of you voted yes for that, twenty-three percent increase. And now we come and say we don't have enough money, we have to borrow a million dollars to buy bathrooms for kids. Who's going to vote no for that? I'd like to propose an amendment to this motion that we cut it in half. Five hundred thousand dollars comes from a bond, so we save half the interest we're going to pay. And five hundred thousand dollars comes from the one point eight million dollar increase in expenditures that we voted for. I can afford a tax increase, but keep in mind, we're talking about tax increases next year and the year after that and the year, when you borrow money, you have to pay it back. The people that can't afford it are not the people in this room. You guys care about the budget? Most of you are retired? Just guessing? You can afford it. It's my daughter who lives in Gray with three kids, who's not here because she has three kids. She's the one that can't afford it and she may not be able to afford it next year. So my proposed amendment is we cut this in half. They do, everything is on that list, but spend half of it, pull it out of the proposed one point eight million dollar increase in the budget, take five hundred thousand dollars of that and do the things on this list, borrow the other five hundred thousand. So that's my proposed amendment.
Seconded.
Seconded over here.
Seconded.
I'm sorry, I did not hear exactly what he asked for, to reduce the line item by to five hundred thousand dollars?
Five hundred thousand, yes. On the bond.
Reduce the bond by five hundred thousand dollars. And I don't know if we're allowed to do this by rules, but then add a statement that says remaining five hundred thousand dollars will come from the proposed operating budget as agreed to in our position.
There's a motion on the floor to amend. That's what we are talking about right now. We can't add things to it.
Point of order.
And it was seconded. Yes.
I'm sorry, were you? If you're a point of order, go ahead. A point of order, just a chamber from the president. We just heard that because of the delay from June on the budget that didn't get approved, that it's going to cost us more to do that work next year, to cut the amount of money in half to do it over a longer period of time, is that going to reduce the cost to residents of Gray with their children? I don't think so. The point of order is this. We've already approved Articles One through Eleven. Are we now being asked to go back and amend some of those because of this?
No.
I am the steward. That the other half million was supposed to come out of monies that have already been allocated in the budget. Some where, some line item, some place. Can we just move forward?
One thing that I'll say in response to that is that the fact that it authorizes the issuance of an amount of money says it's up to that amount of money, so it's not necessarily that amount of money.
Sandra For, West Gray. Just want to speak quickly because I think we should talk a little bit about why we borrow money, right? The reason that we bond is not necessarily because we have run out of money. What we try to do is bond capital items that are likely to benefit people for a long time so that we're not asking just this year's taxpayers to pay for something that is going to have a benefit over the next ten, fifteen or twenty years. And so what a lot of councils do around the state, and which I support, is try to take those items, bond them so that we pay for them a little bit over the next twenty years and we're not asking one year's taxpayers to pay for something that benefits, you know, going out forward. And to speak to the expenditures on these things, I think it's pretty clear that if we don't pay for the septic system now, we will pay more for it later. And if there is anything that I hear from my peer group, it is that we need support for childcare and daycare in the Town of Gray and this will help support that. So I think there's a very targeted expenditures and I support this bond.
Mark Overver, Twenty-six Johnson, Rhodey, Gray. Do I understand we're discussing amendment of this one?
That's correct. It's an amendment to reduce it to five hundred thousand dollars.
Right. That may be a proper motion, but the idea of amending the previous appropriations by increasing F-U, that was not allowed.
No, that is not allowed.
Right, so if this amendment passes, we would only do half of the projects on this because only half of the amendment is valid?
The council would only be authorized to spend up to five hundred thousand dollars as far as that goes.
Right, thank you. Under those circumstances, I oppose this amendment.
Again, Renesha Chank, Gray resident, Village. With my expertise of twenty years being in the wastewater and I have a couple utilities behind and actually bring new utilities built, I will tell you one thing, guys. It will not get cheaper. If you will cut the money right now, you will be paying twice, you will be paying three times. I've seen that before and if you're going to do the project especially, you will have to bring excavators twice. There is mobilization here, there is a lot of other stuff. You will be paying way more money than you dedicated certain amount, like this, like one million dollars, and you start and finish the project. I support.
Yeah, in regards to cutting it, the bond up to five hundred thousand dollars, I really see that it being a reasonable amount. The town needs to prioritize what needs to be done. A septic system upgrade, that's important, but new pickleball courts from a bond or tennis courts or basketball courts, those are not a high priority item. Those are things that maybe could be addressed down the line, coming out of what, the twelve million dollars we have in reserve funding next year? You know, cutting it in half would really be of a benefit and cause the town to prioritize. They're not going to do everything all at once. Winter's coming, nobody's breaking ground, these projects probably won't start These projects probably won't start until next fall. So give the voters, give us the taxpayers some breathing room, prioritize the projects in order of importance.
We are now going to have a vote on the amendment to reduce the amount to a maximum of $500,000. All in favor of that motion, please indicate. There are 37 who have voted in favor of it and there's substantially more than that votes, so we're not going to have a vote on that. Now we're going to talk about the main motion. Main motion, any more comments on that?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. If people feel that $500,000 is too low, let's put it back to the original $850,000 from the June ballot and then re-prioritize everything.
Seconded.
Seconded. Yes, so we have a motion and a second to lower to $800,000.
$850,000.
$850,000, I'm sorry, I don't know what it said. Do we have anybody with questions to speak on that?
Hello?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm detracting a few things here.
My name is Sharon Bondroff, living in South Gray, and I think people who want to lower it half or lower it by three quarters don't really understand what it means to borrow the money and how the money is being used and you just can't slash it this way and that way. It doesn't work that way and I, it frustrates me that people want to make those kind of changes. We're not experts. We don't know, but the people who do know have worked it out and I appreciate it.
Timothy Russell, Representative of Gray. I find it kind of insulting that someone suggests that we don't understand the issue. I, I work in training. I deal with every people every day who can't pay, can't speak, and are trying to find a better job, a better life for themselves. Some of them are facing homelessness, inability to care for their children because of increasing costs. And some of those costs are housing costs and, you know, directly related to the amount of homeowner taxes they, they pay. So if they're in an apartment, taxes go up, their rent's going up. I have people I work with who cannot afford an apartment. Here we are talking about pricing even more people out of the housing market. I think it's something we need to consider.
We currently have a motion to amend to lower the amount to no more than $850,000. All in favor, please indicate. And that was 31 votes in favor. Because we had a lot of people drop out of the room, we're going to go ahead and, sorry about that, because we had so many people leave the room, we're going to go ahead and have a vote of those opposed to that motion. Please indicate. Eighty-two opposed and the amendment fails. So we are now back to the main motion, Article 12. And we vote to vote on this. See anybody? All in favor, please indicate. Two-four. We have a vote of eighty-four in favor. We're going to go ahead and have a vote of those in opposition. Please indicate your opposition. Eighteen opposed and the motion passes. We are now moving on to Article 13 to see if the town will vote to increase the town of Gray's property tax levy limit established for FY2024 by state law to $55,477. In the event that the municipal budget approved, that the preceding articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than that property tax levy limit as recommended by the town council. This one requires a written ballot, and so if you don't have one, please let us know and we will get you one. We'll give you one when you came in. And the ballots are being collected. Are you gonna go around and collect them? They're gonna go around and collect them, so. Did anybody want to discuss this before we go in? People can, if some of us will speak out, they can. We still have to go around. Number thirteen. Sorry, go ahead.
I wanted to ask the same question earlier, which I think we didn't have to answer at the time. I was hoping to find out. So if LD1 fails and the entire budget fails, that is, again, we're operating without a budget and I don't think we, I don't want to live in the world of unintended consequences. There's some consequence to that. And I'd like to know what it is.
Madam moderator, could you just clarify because the numbering system is a little confused between what we have printed and what's on the screen?
I understand that if what you have, go back to the prior page and if it goes from Article 11 to Article 12, you've got the wrong one.
No, I just got always.
If you've got one that says it goes from Article 11 to Article 12, which was the general obligation bonds, then you're all set and this is Article 13. But it is Article 13 regardless.
I just wanted to speak to the question about whether or not LD1, if LD1 fails, does it look like a fail? In the simple answer, yes. It failed in June, therefore we had to revisit all of our articles, although some of them did pass. So if this question fails, the budget fails and basically F Y starts again.
Maybe you can't watch much of your program, but thank you.
Oh, because you know why I'm on messages? I don't, let me.
I can, I can see the frustration. I've been there.
Eighty to forty-one. Everyone, I do have results. Okay, so vote on it was eighty in favor and forty-one opposed, so the motion passes. We are moving on to Article fourteen to see if the town will vote to transfer twenty thousand dollars from the unassigned fund efforts to a credit reserve fund and to appropriate up to twenty thousand dollars for such funds for emergency purposes in the event that the town declares a state of emergency. I have a motion. I have a second. I have a bunch of seconds. Okay, would anyone like to discuss this?
I would like to move your question.
Okay, we've got to move the question. Yep, so we're going to move the question and people are going to vote on it right now on whether to move the question. We have seventy-six in favor moving the questions and we are going to go ahead and vote on the main motion. All in favor, the main motion, please indicate.
We're all tired. We're only lifting up this high.
Brett, I'm still going to have a vote in opposition. We have eighty-three in favor. Those opposed, the motion, please indicate. You can't find not seeing any opposition to it? Okay, great. Article fourteen passes. Article fifteen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town council to dispose of town-owned personal property with a value of one hundred thousand dollars or less and to transfer amounts received from disposition of town-owned personal property with a value of one hundred thousand dollars or less in the capital reserve fund and to appropriate funds from the capital reserve fund for capital improvements and projects as recommended by the town council, provided that the town council shall hold a public hearing prior to the expenditure of any funds from the capital reserve. I just want to, I'll just make a note here that when he talks about personal property, he is not talking about real estate. Could I have a motion? And a second? If any want to be heard on this. I'm not seeing if anybody wants to be heard on this, so I'm going to call for a vote. All in favor? Don't put your arm down. We have eighty-five in favor. Could all those opposed, please indicate. I can do that one, that's zero. So Article fifteen passes. Article sixteen, to see if the town will authorize the town council to accept or reject donations of personal property and/or gifts of money pursuant to fundraising activities on behalf of the town's recreation department, the Dry Mill Schoolhouse, the Gray Public Library Association, the Gray Fire Rescue Association, and various town committees, and to appropriate the same for their intended purposes as recommended by the town council. Could I have a motion, please? Motion, a second. Would anyone like to be heard on this?
So Austin, now to Brett, I have a question. In the committees that you've broken out, is there, is, can anybody explain to me if it could be a separate work of the cemetery association or is that in there? I don't know.
If everyone is okay with it, could I allow them to use this so we can say that? Thanks.
Cemetery. Oh, cemetery, sorry. The cemetery is not affiliated with the town. The town does make a donation to the cemetery association through its, the money that we set aside for other community groups. The only real responsibility to the town as with the cemetery is to turn water on and off, to build some grounds.
Okay, I'll give the premise to my question. In the past, there have been people that have wanted to donate on behalf of a family member to help with the petrol pay.
They should be able to give that to the cemetery association.
Okay, because they were told when they called the town office, the town office said, we'll take it, but we won't designate. So I just want to say that, so it's an association project.
We'll clear that up. Yeah, I did hear it's the association until then. Thank you for the question.
Are there any other questions? If not, I'm going to call for a vote on Article sixteen. All in favor? This is so losing pretty.
That is, that is it.
Eighty-six. Eighty-six. We have eighty-six in favor. Could those opposed, please indicate. Now, there's somebody who may have her top. I am not seeing any. Okay, so it is eighty-six to nothing. Article sixteen passes. Article seventeen, to see if the town will vote to authorize the town council to apply for federal, state, and private funds or grants on the town's behalf and to accept and appropriate such funds or grants for the purpose so suitable for any purpose for which the town has appropriated funds during the period from July first, two thousand twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, as recommended by the town council. Could I have a motion, please? And a second? Would anyone like to be heard on this? I'm going to give you a second and then I'm going to call for a vote. Okay, I think somebody's ready to vote. Okay, all in favor? I am going to agree for the application. We have eighty-four in favor. Would anyone, well, sorry, those are opposed, anyone opposed, please indicate. I see none, and so Article seventeen passes. That is the end of our town meeting. More articles.
I'd like to make a motion. My name is Shalane Shotenko. Shakerode, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn without reconsidering any of the articles voted upon.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn and everybody just indicate with your ballots. The motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, everyone, for coming out and dedicating your day to this process. We appreciate it.
I really feel that for a lot of schools, well, that we got that great, great catch decision. They did, but the, we did, in either sixty-five and over, they met the criteria, but they changed.